Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of May 1st, 2023. I would call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise in for the singing of our National Anthem. Well, thank you to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our National Anthem and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. I will now move into our land acknowledgement. However, it's not in my eScribe, so give me one moment here. Alright, you'll just have to give us a second here. So it's our first time adding the land acknowledgement to our council meeting. It's a very monumental day, so thank you for your patience. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree, Denai and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work and play on Treaty 8 territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. So thank you for your patience with that. I will now move on to proclamations. And I have one proclamation for today. I am proud to proclaim Goodwill Week, April 30th to May 6th, 2023. Whereas every year during the first week of May, goodwill agencies across Canada and the United States celebrate the power of work. And whereas here in Grand Prairie and across the province, Goodwill Industries of Alberta celebrates the incredible communities who have helped the organization realize its mission of connecting people with the disabilities of meaningful employment. And whereas Goodwill Industries of Alberta is celebrating 60 years of making a difference in the lives of Albertans and the communities they serve. And whereas through the generosity of donors, shoppers and members of the community, goodwill is able to offer a hand up to Albertans with disabilities to achieve their goals of workplace independence. Now therefore, I, Jackie Clayton, Mayor of the City of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim April 30th to May 6th, 2023 as Goodwill Week and thank Grand Prairie for supporting this organization and enhancing the lives of our fellow Albertans. Thank you for that. I will now move on to the adoption of the previous council minutes and I'll recognize councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council adopt the minutes of the City Council Meeting held April 17th, 2023 as presented.
That motion is in order. Thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue with errors or omissions, I'll call the question.
Councillor O'Toole in favour.
Councillor O'Toole in favour. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's minutes, councillor O'Connor.
You're muting me. I'd like to move that council accept the agenda as presented.
Sorry councillor O'Connor, there's just one, two additions there and they're wording.
Just one second?
Yep, you bet.
Okay, I will. Thank you. Council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 8.2, Grand Prairie Police Commission, Public Member Appointments and item 8.3, Public Member Appointments.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That meeting or that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with comments or questions, I will call the question. Please vote. Councillor O'Toole, how do you vote?
Councillor O'Toole in favour.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And that carries unanimously. I'm just going to ask if our city solicitor could turn off his mic or get out of the queue for me. Thank you so much. Alright, moving on to item number seven of today's agenda under delegations. If you're not aware and you'd like to speak to council, we strongly encourage you to do so. There's just a little bit of paperwork that we ask you to do ahead of time. You can come to the afternoon session and if we're having an evening session, that is an option as well. Today, we aren't having an evening session. I did also, I didn't identify earlier, but councillor O'Toole and councillor O'Connor are joining us online today. And in the delegation portion of our meeting, there are three groups that has let us let us know ahead of time that they would like to speak to council. First one being Grand Prairie Pirates, Fastball Pirates Association. If you want to come up to the table, this group has been here before and we're happy to see them again. And if you want to, I'll give you a couple of minutes to get set up. I'll turn your mic on. Once you're ready ladies, if you could just introduce yourself for those who are watching online, that would be greatly appreciated. And you are good to go.
Hi everyone. My name is Rye and I am the Fundraising and Sponsorship Director with Grand Prairie Pirates Minor Fastball. With me today I have Jasmine. She is our newly appointed Vice President with the Minor Portfolio. I had previously sent, oh, there it is. Look at all that wonderful yellow. Alright, so we are Grand Prairie Pirates Minor Fastball. We operate under Grand Prairie Fastball Association. And we too would like to acknowledge that we originate, operate and developed on Treaty 8 traditional territory, ancestral home of the Cree, Beaver, Denai and Métis people. We have also, well, we would like to also acknowledge that all First Nations and Inuit people who have lived, travelled and gathered on these lands for thousands of years. So a couple introductions. So Shane is still our president. I don't think he will ever leave and that's not a horrible thing. Jasmine, who is a coach, she is a fastball mum and she is now our Vice President with the Minor Portfolio. Debbie Isley is our Treasurer and then there's me in all my glory and you get to see me again. So a little bit about who we are. So Grand Prairie Fastball Association is the umbrella organisation for the men's side and Pirates Minor Fastball. And they have been instrumental in putting Grand Prairie back on the map for fastball. The men's program grew to over 50 active members with the promise of more growth this year. We started with 40 girls and we now have over 275 kids in our program registered this year. And we went from 14 teams to 24. So we'll be coming to talk to you guys again in probably September about more diamond space please. We have successfully launched a boys' program last year and we currently have the second largest boys' program in Alberta. We have the third largest program for minor sports with Softball Alberta as well and we are one of the only grassroots organisations of our size. One of our mandates with Pirates is that we support inclusivity within the organisation and we first and foremost want to provide a safe place and do provide a safe place for all members to play. So how we do Pirates. So Pirates is a year-round thing for us. We do year-round training at the off-season as well as the county sportsplex. Our men's program also plays all year and they're actually all over Alberta, so they practise and have a schedule that they facilitate all over the place. Hosting opportunities. So part of the reason why we're here today is provincials. We have been awarded U13D and U15D provincials to take place on the same weekend at South Bear Creek. We did a STEAM report for that and I did attach that originally in for you guys to review. We're hoping that with provincials and them being a success here, that we will be able to host more amazing opportunities for the sport. So that includes Western provincials and national events, which we have done in the past. We also participate in highway cleanups and do whatever we can to give back to our community because with 300 kids and families and everything that contribute, we need to give back to the community that supports us. Why I'm here today. So today we are asking for a $10,000 title sponsorship for provincials. And we are planning to see 24 teams from across Alberta as well as Northwest Territories in the Yukon joining us as well. They have reached out and asked if they could join our provincials. Softball Alberta also said yes. We took a vote on that, I believe, in October? Nope, that was in March. So it's a, it'll be an absolute honour to host them if they are able to attend. This event is huge for our sport. Last time we hosted provincials at this level, it was U12 and U19 and we only saw two out-of-town teams come and participate. Now we're, we're looking to see 24. The sport has grown significantly across Alberta. I'm also the Zone 8 district organiser with Softball Alberta, so I know the importance of having communities like Grand Prairie and Zone 8 participate and be able to excel for, for the kids and for the sport that's growing. So the STEAM report, it's expected to see $327,000 for the province of Alberta and just about $300,000 of that will be for the Grand Prairie alone. This again gives us the opportunity to host more elite events and hopefully see a training facility that will be the hub of, of fastball and softball within Alberta. Right now, our closest training facility for indoor facility that is just exclusively for fastball and softball is in Saskatoon. So like I said, our growth is significant. Hosting opportunities are unlimited. Once we put our name back on the map and have successful events, having the sponsorship will help make that happen. Expanding our organisation and hopefully getting the respect and the, the opportunity for our kids to play and our, our adults to play. One thing to keep in mind that our U13 and some of our U15 levels are the next Olympic hopefuls for the 2027 Olympics in LA. So these girls and actually boys could, could go and be Olympics, be Olympians and that, that to me would just be fantastic. So just to outline some of our costs that are, we are expecting with provincials. So the umpires is our biggest cost. This event's going to cost us about $60,000 as an organisation, which, you know, it's... The experience will be priceless for these kids, but the money has to come from somewhere and we're really hoping that the city and our municipalities can come on board and, and help us with that. So umpires, we're having to bring in, what was it? I think about 30 umpires and about five supervisors. So we have to pay for their travel, their per DMs, their accommodations. We have asked a local hotel to come on as a sponsor for that as well. The facility cost is going to be about $5,000 to rent South Bear for that weekend, just for those three days. And then there's also miscellaneous costs like insurance and we run a heart and hustle program that one member from every team of every game gets an MVP, so a heart and hustle. So the other team nominates for your team to say, hey, who's that spunky little catcher? They get our MVP award. It's super cute. It's, it's the best. And then medals as well. So you're looking at three sets for each division at about 1,500 bucks per division. So there's other sponsorships always available and we are open to if, if the city does not approve a $10,000 title sponsorship, that we would definitely be interested in having a conversation about other items. So title sponsors, there's two available at 10,000. Diamond sponsors, there's five available, so that we would pay for a banner and that would be, say the city came on as one of those, so you would be at the city diamond and/or the county has come on as a diamond sponsor. So they will have one diamond that is labelled the county diamond. There's pirate sponsors at $1,000 each. And then asking for very specific asks with umpire sponsors. So having somebody to pay the $23,000 for, for umpires would be fantastic. And then other gift and kind and, and whatnot for every other level. So that's one of my favorite pictures. That's when we hosted U-12, and that was at the IF game, and our U-12 girls ended up taking home silver that year. The majority of them had never played ball before and had never competed at a provincial level, and it was a pretty tight game, so we pulled out some rally cap time. I believe that that's all that I have. If anybody had any questions for me, we would love to hear them. Oh, and I'd also spoken with Katie, so we have applied for the sport hosting grant as well. So with that, and I know the, the fundraising or the funding restrictions, we want to keep our delegation in, so if we do get the sponsorship or a certain level of sponsorship through you guys, we would be pulling our, our sport hosting grant for provincials event. And, or if you have decided that no, then we would keep our, our request in for the sport hosting grant. So either way, it'll be hoping to have some money from you guys.
Minutes, and thanks for turning my mic on. And you did perfect without me even asking, so thank you for that.
Look at me go.
Yeah, good job. I do, now's an opportunity for council to ask questions, and I do have quite a few members of council in the queue as well. I have some questions myself, but first I'll recognize councillor Blackmore.
Well, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I have two questions. Well, really just one question. You're asking the city for a $10,000 title sponsor grant, and is that 10,000 cash, or would you take 10,000 cash, or five, five cash and five gift and kind for the pavilion?
We would absolutely consider that.
That was my question, thanks.
All right, thanks for that. Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. My question is to Rye. I'm anticipating that the scouts will be coming like you had in 2021, and you had, how many people got picked for the national?
So, the scouting opportunity that we've discussed was actually when our teams went to Stettler to compete in a tournament, and there was U-15 girls who were being scouted by the University of Washington at that time for full rides from the Stettler team, not from, not from Pirates, but are, we have quite a few members of our organization that are very promising collegiate level and so on, and moving on with their lives. We have actually one of our coaches who is being, what's the word? I'm looking, it's not scouted, but he's being reviewed to coach in Miami or Lafayette? And Texas, and he's 21?
Oh, very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, ladies, for what you're doing, not only developing young athletes but great citizens. So in your presentation, you implied, but I wasn't quite clear, have you approached the county yet?
Yes, we have.
Have they approved a certain amount?
Yes, so they came on as a diamond sponsor at $5,000.
Okay, yeah.
Which is what they've traditionally done. They were one of the $5,000 sponsors when the men's hosted nationals here as well, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming and for setting this up. This is, my kids are involved, love it, so good. My question to you is the sport hosting grant that you applied for, how much was that for?
We would get a maximum of 5,000 as an organization. So the men's program is also hosting a tournament here, the Father's Day weekend, so they've applied for the sport hosting grant as well, and you can only get so much as an organization, and because we do operate as one, it would, we would have to figure out how we would do that with the help of Katie.
Okay, this helps, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I had a question you mentioned in regards to training facility. Just currently, I've seen social media, I think there's a couple indoor batting cages that maybe some of your players use, but do you currently use any of the indoor facilities such as Crosslink for training?
Yes, so we operate our winter clinics, they operate every Sunday for two, two different age groups, a beginner and an advanced. So we do that every Sunday in the offseason as well as our travel teams, so I'm helping coach one of the travel teams for U-13 this year. And we have done two of our sessions at the county sportsplex in the last two weeks. We're also at the batting cages. We were just waiting for the diamonds to open, so I have a feeling we'll be hitting some shale on, on Thursday.
Perfect.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Oh, and I had one more question, since I don't see anyone else in the queue. To date, how is your sponsorship drive going? What have you raised for the tournament?
For the tournament? We don't have.
Provincials, sorry.
Yeah, for provincials, so because we, we still technically have registration open, we were waiting on two more kids to finalize yes or no as to whether or not they would like to participate in our program. Once we have everything done and we can hit the fields, then will we go into our parents and say, we need a committee for this, we need a committee for that, let's make this happen, and kind of help delegate those tasks? So we put some asks out. We also have five U-13 teams this year. We get to send two at the D-level, so we'll get one as a host team as well as one that competes and is the higher one for that, that group or that division. So we don't know which of our five teams or which two of our five teams will actually be attending to represent Grand Prairie and the Pirates.
Sorry, I might not have been clear. You're out there raising money, the county's giving you 5,000. Have you raised any other money to date?
To date, that is the only amount.
Okay, awesome, thank you for that. I see no further questions from council, so in case you're not aware, if you don't remember the process, you're more than welcome to sit here and watch the rest of council. It's not a very long agenda. Delegations are dealt with at the end of the meeting, and if you have to go do other things, someone from administration will follow up with you.
Perfect, thank you so much, everyone.
Thanks for coming, ladies. All right, moving along, our second delegation for today is Marie Charbonneau. And if you would like to come up, again, you're very familiar with the process, but five minutes for delegation and then an opportunity for questions from council, so welcome if you could introduce yourself for those who are watching online.
Thank you. My name's Marie Renee Charbonneau. I'm the executive director for the Canadian Motorcycle Tourism Association, collections manager for Veterans Memorial Gardens and interpretive center. The reason I'm here before you today is to discuss with you what we discussed last time I was here, which is our big commemoration event, September 8, 9, and 10. Things have changed quite drastically for the positive with this event, however, that requires more fundraising than I anticipated originally because I missed the grant deadline for the culture grant. So I'm sitting here with an event that has gone from 140 people that we could house at our own facility to an event that has grown to over 300, and we need to rent the Bose Center. So help, it's become very, the emotion behind it has really caught on with a lot of people in the region. We have sent out several applications to all of the regional counties and MDs, letting them know how many regional killed-in-action soldiers came from their MD or county, and we're starting to get some responses in. We've gotten County of Northern Lights to support us, and we're in the queue for a number to come up over the next three to four weeks. We're looking at having already raised $20,000 of our $85,000 budget, and we're asking the, the city to consider being our master warrant officer sponsor, which is our presenting sponsor. You would get 200 radio ads, web ads, poster ads, content marketing, name mentions at all of the events all weekend long because it's a three-day event, plus 24 steak dinners for the Friday night and three tables for the dinner on Saturday night. We're also looking to potentially, thanks to Kevin O'Toole's ideology, look for parade support. We're looking at bringing up 30 military vehicles from the Edmonton area that would be able to provide a beautiful parade Saturday morning, going from D-Company armories over to Veterans Gardens. So depending on logistics, that would be something we would also like help with. Other than that, I can send out the sponsorship information, and I didn't fill out the small grant application because I wasn't sure if there was something else I should be filling out for a larger ask than the 14.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of members of council with questions. Councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And Renee, I always admire the hard work and dedication that you have to your organizations. Can you just let us know what happened to, in a, in a positive way, to go from 140 to 300? Like where, what's the interest in?
The interest has largely been with the Loyal Edmonton Regiment and the regiment's association in that they would like to invite the cadets from all Loyal Edmonton Regiment Cadet battalions. So that means inviting potentially 10 from the Northwest Territories, 10 from Vermillion, 10 here, 20 there, 30 from our local. And so having our youth be able to participate so strongly with a regiment that they actually represent and, and march under would be hugely beneficial to the cadets. I think it would be a wonderful social opportunity for them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Renee, for coming. My question to you is this dine and dance to follow that you're hosting at the Bonnet Center is what I'm assuming that you're looking at doing.
Yes.
Are you selling tables to this?
We will be selling tables now to the general public as well, but these 300 just cover dignitaries that we're bringing in from Quebec, Ontario, Manitoba, and throughout different parts of the province. So one of the, the dignitaries we're bringing in is Randy Su, the lady who is the last founding member of the National Aboriginal Veterans Association, and she'll be working with the Silver Cross families that are indigenous. We have Chuck Isaacs from the Alberta Aboriginal Veterans Association we're bringing in, the gentleman who created the video series Bravery in Arms, Roger Chabot. I sent you all the link to, to some of his documentaries. We want to bring him because he is so highly connected to Ortona in particular. We've learned that the lady who is the head of the Remembrance Society for Ortona has just been re-diagnosed with cancer, and so when Roger goes over, he's actually going to do an interview with her that we're going to be able to broadcast during our dinner, bringing that flavor of Ortona, Italy right to Grand Prairie.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Out of these 300 people, your dignitaries that you spoke of, are they all paid through or you're hoping to have them paid through this, this sponsorship of up to 85,000 in total?
Yes. So what we're doing is we're looking to the city for $20,000 instead of the 14 that's originally offered. And then we have the Loyal Edmonton Regiment Veterans Association actually wanting to support, and like I said, a number of the various counties and different corporate sponsors, and then as many dinners as we can sell.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Bosch. I had a question. You mentioned in your delegation request form that you were looking for 22.5 for all of the meals at the event, and then when I look at your agenda, you mentioned a pancake breakfast as well as a barbecue for show and shine. Have you talked to Rotary or any service clubs and/or private industry? I know lots of community members, and there's many people out there that do barbecues and pancake breakfasts. Have you talked to them for those?
We're already secured for the breakfast and for the steak dinner, and the 22.5 for the dinners is for the Saturday night event.
That's just for the?
That's to bring in the dignitaries for, for the meal. It, it works out to about $75 per person for the dinner, the rentals, and all of the other stuff that, and I haven't gotten a firm donate, a firm quotation yet from the Bose Center. I was hoping to have it before today, but they haven't quite given it to me, so it may come in at $65 per person. I'm not quite sure, but to be safe, I'm asking for the full 22.5.
Okay, and so you have been doing other fundraising?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so I'm, as with the other delegation, is there an opportunity if council so chooses for gift and kind, or is this strictly a cash request?
Oh, no, there's the opportunity for gift and kind, depending on what that gift and kind would look like. Of course, my biggest, my biggest expense is going to be bringing those cadets to dinner, bringing those different dignitaries in for dinner. Once that's covered and I have my fuel expenses and airfare for some of these dignitaries covered, then we're in pretty good shape. So if we can get help with expenses at the Bose Center, if there's anything like that that can be done, absolutely.
Okay. All right, councillor Berg, I see has another question.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. So Renee, can you refresh my memory? And I think you, you just hinted at it. You said that we've already approved 14,000 through a grant?
No. Councillor Thiessen had recommended that I go to the city website and apply for the $14,000 grant that's on, but if you want more than that, you have to come to council, is what I understood. So that's why I'm asking, because I'm needing a little bit more than the 14.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
All right, well, I see no one else in the queue or online, so I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
And you're more than welcome to stick around. Thanks so much. Moving on to our next delegation for today's meeting, Mr. Daniel Becker. If you would like to come forward, sir, give you a few minutes to get set up, and then just, hello, welcome. Introduce yourselves once you're set up, and five minutes, and then council will have an opportunity for questions. No, I'll, I'll be the timer, so you're good.
You can yell at me if I'm going over.
I won't yell. We'll leave that to councillor Plott.
Ow.
Are we good on displays?
It'd probably just take a second.
Okay.
There we go.
Nice. Okay. So I believe you have the documents that I sent out with the package, with the budget and the sponsorship list, correct? Okay, cool. So just some introductions. Actually, I'll start this, sorry. It's been a while since I used PowerPoint.
Yep.
Slide show. Play from start, hey, look at that. My laptop, I think my laptop just turned off.
There you go, we're good.
Thank goodness. Oh, my God.
So, don't forget to introduce yourselves.
Yes.
And then, then feel from the start.
So my name is Daniel Becker. I am the chosen representative for the Grand Prairie Aboriginal Circle of Services Committee for the Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow, and I'm joined today with elder Teresa Gadju. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Okay. We were hoping to have other people, so that list is incorrect. I apologize for that.
That's all right, welcome.
On the committee, we have a list here, it's a very broad group of people. Wendy Guley is the chair for the committee.
Just so you know, she's joining us online.
Is she here?
She is.
Can she say something?
Ms. Guley, are you still with us?
I am here, yeah.
No worries.
And I don't know how much experience Wendy has, but I'm sure it's over 10 years, like over a decade of experience running Powwows, but she'll have to confirm that, so I'm not 100% sure. Just to give you an example of previous years, in 2017, we held our first annual, 2000, that's a photo from the event. 2018, we held the second annual with attendance around 4,000, and in 2020 was the third annual, but it was a little derailed because of COVID, and we had to go online, so it was a little bit unattended. 2021, it was postponed for 2022, and 2022 was postponed. So here we are in 2023, requesting support for the fourth annual Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow. Just to review the general event, we are hoping to hold it in the Bonnet's Energy Center on June 24th. These are just generic hours, we still have to decide the actual hours for the event as well. And then just to give you ideas of other Powwows in the region and kind of give you ideas of the days and the timelines, I provided those kind of as examples. Sturgeon Lakes, sorry, and the Red Deer Traditional Powwow as well. I'll move on. And just a general budget overview, I believe you'll have your numbers. We have kind of a general draft template of around $150,000. That, of course, is not considering gifts and kind or contributions from donors. For our funding update, I believe you have a list of the sponsorships. Currently, we have around $18,000 confirmed. And for Travel Alberta, we did receive confirmation last week that they are looking to fund 30% of the ask that I sent in February, which was $100,000. So they're looking to fund around $30,000 with a couple other key requirements for metrics and stuff like that, so. For partnerships, the art gallery has stepped up and partnered, kind of serendipitous. We did book in January, before I was requested to be on the committee, a Powwow-themed exhibit that was manufactured or created, sorry, by the Red Deer Museum with the curators Patrick and Marissa Mitziwing, who are notable Powwow, professional Powwow dancers who have incredible careers and will be up. So advertisement strategy, this is a very, you know, loose rundown of it. We have contacted AFM, we have talked to CFCW and looked for some costs. Today gave us around $1,200 for six weeks at three advertisements a day, 15 seconds a day. And then additional free advertising, we have contacted, we're looking at different Powwow groups that have memberships of around 23,000 to 17,000 members right there. And for the travel Alberta, they're very obsessed with metric tracking because it's provincial money, of course. So we're going to be working with campgrounds, hotels, the event itself, and vendors to kind of drum up some numbers for spread and amount of money brought in for the actual events. So... And then Warren wanted me to note that, and I, you know, it's very important to bring out, that this is the first post-COVID event, and we really are hoping that the city will support financially and in gift and kind. We're generally asking for a range of anywhere from 55 to 75. That's kind of our hopes, but of course, that's under your purview of our, of course. And then next year is the 125th anniversary of the Treaty VIII signing, which works very opportunistically for the timeline. I believe it's June 21st. Yes, I got the date right. And the Powwow will be on the 22nd and 23rd. And of course, our hopes are that 25th, or 2025, we will have drummed up enough consecutive performance that it will be self-sufficient at that point. So we want to get away from requesting grant and city support at some point. So... And then that's my contributions to this presentation, and I've kept it very quick. If you have any questions, Wendy is here as well, so... And Teresa is here as well, if you have any questions for her, so...
Perfect. Well, thank you for your presentation. Opening up the questions from council, recognizing Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So Daniel, can you lay out some of the activities that will go on during the Powwow? Just to go back to the...
I can say that.
Oh, sure, Wendy, go ahead.
Go ahead, Wendy.
So for the Powwow, we would have, some of the events we would have is, we would have each of the dance categories. We would have tiny tots, which are, you know, babies to like about four years old, junior age dancers, teens, adults. So they would dance their categories at least twice in the day. We also have golden age. We'd also have children's activities going on. We would have traditional food vendors. We'll have traditional vendors, so we'll have authentic Indigenous-made crafts that will be available at the event. And we'll also have the hand games going on. So we'll have a lot of different events going on. It's a really good opportunity for non-Indigenous people to come in and check out a Powwow. I'm May T., and I know before I started going to Powwows and hosting, I was apprehensive about going to a Powwow, like that was on reserve and stuff like this. But after coming to an urban Powwow, like I have no problem going anywhere to any Powwow now, so I'm sure people would feel the same.
Yeah, thank you. Great earrings, by the way. The reason I was asking is Mayor Clayton and I just happened to be in Regina last year when they had their Powwow, and we love the little dancers, of course, they're just absolutely adorable, but we spent a lot of time at the vendors market and just, I really enjoyed looking at the crafts and everything that was made there. So glad that that's part of it as well. Thank you.
Yeah. We also have a rule with ours, too, that it has to be authentically made on Turtle Island. One of the first Powwows I hosted, I wasn't aware of people like that people were getting things ordered from overseas. And after that, once I found out, then after that, just made a rule straight across the board, you have to have made it on Turtle Island so that people are buying authentic stuff.
Perfect. Thank you for your question, Counselor Berg. Moving on, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thank you very much, Daniel and Teresa, for being here today for this. I was actually a part of the first couple Powwows, the first one that came back to Grand Prairie. I think it was done in the old comp field there, Legion Field, so that was a good time had by all, at least by me. So I count me as all sometimes. My question is, you said you were looking for sponsorship dollars, gift and kinds, all sorts of stuff. I was sort of pressed to find a number in what you guys had sent forward, but then you said 55 to 75, Daniel. Is that 5,500 to 7,500?
A thousand.
So 55,000 to 75,000? Is that the ask from the city of Grand Prairie, or... Okay, so 55 to 75,000? Okay, thank you.
All right. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you both for coming. I'm excited to see this in the city. I just have, and this might be a strange question, but in my head, it seems like it should be outside on the grass. So I don't know if I'm missing something here, but would the Teresa Sargent property be helpful to you? Like, does it have to be at Bonnet's or, and an indoor thing? I'm just curious. It just told me might be...
Outside. I can take that, Daniel. Outside is really nice to host a Powwow. You are correct. It's nice being on the ground. It's easier for the dancers. The reason we went with the Bonnet Center is we won't have the weather factor. When you host outside, you always have to have a backup plan of go, you know, like where you're going to go if it rains. The other thing with Bonnet's is we would need seating, like portable bleachers. I'm not sure of any of the facilities in Grand Prairie, if they do have it. Our first Powwow we had in 2017, we were able to do that outside. It was, I want to say we had like a little over 100 dancers. I can't remember how many spectators we had, but the next one we hosted when we went into Evergreen Place, I think we took in like 4,000 different spectators, that wasn't counting our dancers and drummers. So we might be too big for Teresa Sargent Hall outside. It wouldn't be like our first one, but ideally, we would like to go outside. Bonnet's is really nice, though, just with the facility's nice. We went and checked it out, and the services, they can help us to host it, like security. We won't have to worry about it and some other things.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's a good problem to have, that you outgrow, you know, certain sites. That's awesome. And I imagine it'll be even bigger this year. May I ask one more question for it? The, you're essentially looking for $100,000 because you pretty much got 50,000 wrapped up here between Alberta Tourism and the 18,000 confirmed. Is there any cultural heritage grants available for this event?
So I did submit an application to the Canadian Council for the Arts. I did a max ask of $100,000, same as the travel Alberta. I requested a joint event funding. It was for the city, I'm sorry, for the gallery, the Powwow, and the September 30th ceremonies. I asked for 15,000 for the gallery, 65 for the Powwow, and 20 for the September 30th. They're getting back to us in May. So just trying to pad like the partnerships that make it a more community-based event. Because we have a Powwow-themed exhibit coming into the organization during that period, and because the organization has identified that area as like the prime portion to put Indigenous-themed exhibits, it really does allow us to capitalize on these types of events. And in June, leading up to the Powwow, we can have a lot of sponsorship events. We really have to like make sure that for May, we're going to be doing a lot of canvassing, like a lot. But like, you know, so far, there's been a very good response. Enbridge gave us 2,000, PV Mark gave us 1,000, you know, Oilco, Arc Resources promised, I think, 3,000? We're getting support, and I think as long as we keep our foot on the gas, I think we'll get another 20 or another 30. In terms of like the $150,000 as well, you know, we might get a lot of stuff gift and kind as it's going along as well. Cal Tire came forward and they said, well, could we also provide food and a barbecue? So that reduces the cost of supplying food for the dancers. So we have in that budget around $8,000 for dancers, so that would definitely reduce our costs. So it's, we won't really know until we have a final report after of our final cost, if we've like maxed out, but like, you know, we might, you know, general just cash, straight-up cash, we, you know, we might be doing 100,000 and 50,000 might be gift and kind. The other thing as well, like Bonnet Center was quoted as 8,400. We would love to have that as a gift and kind as well. That definitely reduces our budget, so...
Thank you.
Counselor O'Connor.
I can never find the mic button. Okay. Thank you very much, Daniel and Teresa. And I also was in Regina, and I observed the Powwow from a distance. My hip wasn't working right, but I'll tell you what, the colors and the festivity, the happiness, so I really think it's important. I'm glad you mentioned that as a Caucasian, I would love to be able to go and take part. And so I'm glad you feel that I'm welcome. So have you approached GPRTA to help promote your event?
They are on the committee. Ken is on the committee, and he has also like acknowledged that he would like to support the event through advertising and gift and kind as well, so...
All right. Well, I see no more questions, no one in the queue, so thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate your presentation. And as mentioned, delegation business is handled at the end of our meeting.
I also forgot to thank the council for the land acknowledgement at the beginning. That was very, it's an amazing move, so...
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy, for joining us. All right, moving on to reports, moving on to item eight of today's agenda. First report in your package is 8.1, the 2023 Weed Inspector and Appeals Panel Appointments. I'll give...
Sorry, Mayor Clayton.
Sorry. Sorry, one second. No, weed appointments and panel appointments. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to declare a Puking area interest as my company does significant business in weed removal.
All right. Counselor Bressi, we'll leave the chambers for this discussion, and I'll turn it over to Mr. DeVries.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Here today to present the 2023 Weed Inspector and the Appeals Panel Appointment. This is an annual piece of business that we do from our Parks Department. So the recommendations today are that council appoint Ms. Barb Wielander, Ms. Teven Fournier, Ms. Rebecca McTavish, and Ms. Lisa Horleak as weed inspectors under the Weed Control Act of Alberta until October 1, 2023. And the second recommendation, that council appoint the Operational Services Committee as an independent appeals panel for 2023. Thank you.
Okay, so those motions are in order. Comments or questions from council? Counselor Thiessen.
If there are no questions, I'd be prepared to make the motion.
Perfect. So those motions as is, Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah, just to speak to the motion, I might as well read them all out, just so we're for sure, but this is a piece of business that we do annually. It's almost like checking the boxes of things to do. So unless there's a name that really jumps out that maybe we shouldn't be, I don't know, I've never had that come across, so I don't know why we wouldn't do this. So I'd move that council appoint Ms. Barb Wielander, Ms. Teven Fournier, Ms. Rebecca McTavish, and Ms. Lisa Horleak as weed inspectors under the Weed Control Act of Alberta until October 1, 2023, and council appoint the Operational Services Committee as an independent appeals panel for 2023, for all the reasons I just stated before and as presented in the report.
Perfect, thanks for that. Comments or questions on the motion?
There was one name missed, or unless it was meant to be missed.
So the motion as recommended is Ms. Barb Wielander, Ms. Teven Fournier, Ms. Rebecca McTavish, and Ms. Lisa Alorak?
Thank you.
All right. So the motion as is in the report. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor O'Toole, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you for that. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for your presentation today, Mr. DeVries, and we'll give Counselor Bressi a minute to come back into the chambers. All right. Now we're moving on to item 8.2, the Grand Prairie Police Commission Public Member Appointments. And I'll call Ms. Leona Hansen to the delegation table for an introduction.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, with your permission, I will do the introduction.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. So to introduce this item, on March 6, council directed administration to take steps to establish a municipal police service. Bylaw 1455 was adopted on March 20, which directed administration, or allowed, sorry, allowed legislation to establish the Grand Prairie Police Commission. And then on March 27, a resolution of council was approved for the draft Grand Prairie Police Commission recruitment and selection policy and draft Grand Prairie Police Competency Framework. As a result of that, a panel was established to look at a recruitment process and take steps to proceed with that. And with that, I will turn this over to Ms. Hansen, who was part of the support process for the panel, and she will go through the steps that were taken and the outcome recommendations from that panel.
Perfect. Thank you for that introduction. Ms. Hansen?
Thank you, through the chair. So the review panel was comprised of six members as follows. Mayor Clayton, Counselor O'Connor, CEO Nicolay, a local lawyer, a local human resources specialist, and a former chief of police and counselor from another municipality. The, as the panel went through the process, it was a rigorous exercise that they undertook. There was an 18-scale competency framework that was developed to assist the applicant review panel with the selection process. It was very encouraging to see that there were 72 individuals that submitted applications for their interest in appointment to the Grand Prairie Police Commission. From there, there was also a candidate skill ranking framework that was put together, so looking at the competency that aligned with the 18-scale competency framework. So it was a scoring methodology that looked at a rating from one to five for each of the candidates. From there, they went through the applications and were able to shortlist to 11 individuals and further, provide further assessment before making recommendation to council. As part of the assessment process with any recruitment, there were a number of additional steps that were undertaken, such as reference checks, personal interviews were conducted with shortlisted individuals, and as well as criminal record check. I was pleased to announce that there were, they were all positive outcomes for the shortlisted candidates' names that were put forward. And with that, also council was provided with resumes so they could review those in more detail for their consideration. So this evening or this afternoon, their recommendation is for council to approve five appointments as public members to the Grand Prairie Police Commission effective May 1, 2023, for a three-year term, or expiry of the council's... check. I was pleased to announce that there were, they were all positive outcomes for the shortlisted candidates' names that were put forward. And with that, also council was provided with resumes so they could review those in more detail for their consideration. So this evening or this afternoon, their recommendation is for council to approve five appointments as public members to the Grand Prairie Police Commission effective May 1, 2023, for a three-year term. And secondly, the recommendation is to have council approve two council members for appointment to the Grand Prairie Police Commission effective May 1, 2023, for a three-year term or expiry of the council's term of office, whichever occurs sooner. There are names available for recommendation that can be provided, and I would look for mayor's direction on that.
I apologize that last, I missed your last question.
So we do have names for recommendation for appointment. And so we have, for councillors, we are recommending Counselor Bressi and Counselor O'Toole.
Perfect. So when we come to that portion of the motion, I'll ask the councillors to leave the chambers in case there's any discussion or debate over those choices. But for now, I'll open it up to council for questions. I did want to say, before we get to the business of this, that I truly appreciate the support from the community and outside of the community in the application process to see 72 qualified candidates apply for this commission. Really shows, in my opinion, the importance of the work that will be done by the commission and the engagement, as well as the passion of our, of the applicants in regards to doing an exceptional job on this commission. I think that, that I really want to thank the panel, the selection committee. It was a very quick turnaround in the sense of reviewing 72 names, measuring them against a skills matrix, but also committing the time that was needed to go through those applications, to have the process of discussion. Administration really stepped up in regards to interviewing, helping us interview the candidates, as well as being there for support as needed. This was an extensive process, and I'm really happy to see where we've gotten to today. And I think that we should be proud of the work that was, the names that are in front of us. And I'll open it up for discussion and debate. But if somebody could put a motion forward first, that would be great. Counselor Blackmore.
Put the motion forward. So I would move that council approve Tim Burnham, Kelly Benning, Donna Cook, Dan Wong, and Natalia Ryman as the public member appointments to the Grand Prairie Police Commission effective May 1, 2023, for a three-year term.
Perfect. So that motion is in order. Open it up for discussion and debate. Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. One of the things, just want to thank all, everybody that applied. It's a huge commitment and just shows the dedication of the community and those that didn't get named. Again, this is going to be an ongoing commission, so please keep in mind future opportunities. Also, one of the interesting things that I, that I found interesting is part of the process of vetting these people was social media, something that we probably didn't have to do about 10 years ago, but that was included as part of the process, just so that that is out in public. So that for future people, just be aware that this is a very credible entity and that your social media and your public presence matters.
Thanks for those comments. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question on the motion. Counselor O'Toole, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole. And that carries unanimously. Now I can just give, ask Counselor Bressi to step out of the room, Counselor O'Toole to turn off your camera and step away out of your space. Thank you. Someone could put forward this motion and we can have discussion and debate. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve Counselor Bressi, or council approve Councillors Bressi and O'Toole for appointment to the Grand Prairie Police Commission effective May 1, 2023, for a three-year term, or the expiry of the council's term, whichever occurs sooner.
Perfect. Thank you for that motion. That motion's in order. Any discussion or debate? I recognize Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll be in support of this motion. Both Counselor Bressi and Counselor O'Toole have been part of the Police Advisory Committee, so they have been involved quite extensively over the years. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Seeing no one else, I'll call the question. And that carries six to one. Wait for Counselor Bressi to come back in, Counselor O'Toole to get back on. And again, thank you for the councillors that are going to sit in this commission. Thank you ahead of time for the work that you will be doing. And thank you to the selection panel for the time, as well as the support from administration. I look forward to the work that we'll see from the members that we appointed today. Moving on to item eight point three, the Grand Prairie, sorry, the public member appointments. Council, there is in your package, as we often do through regular boards, commissions, have some appointments and changes of the community boards that we, and commissions that we over have oversight on. There are four motions in your package today, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Yes, I'll start by asking for a motion that council appoint Counselor Leanne Boprey, representing the County of Grand Prairie, to the Grand Prairie Public Library Board for a term ending December 31, 2023, and remove Counselor Thiessen as an alternate to the board. And speaking to that, there is a spot at the board for someone from County Council, and County Council does appoint that person. Then that appointment needs to be basically ratified by the city, as it is a board that is purviewed to the City of Grand Prairie. Counselor Thiessen is being removed as an alternate, because we have discovered that their bylaws do not allow for an alternate. It's not that they don't like him. They might not like him. We don't really know.
All right. So that motion is in order. Thanks for that. Recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Yeah, I'm here. I was going to do business on the movement on the next one.
All right. Thank you for that. So I see no one in the queue or online with discussion or debate on this motion. I'll call the question.
Counselor O'Toole, in favor.
That carries unanimously. Recognizing Counselor O'Connor for the next item of business.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council appoint Lynn Coulter as Chair of the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for a term ending December 31, 2023. With his vast knowledge in doing this over the years and his requisite licenses, I think he'd be a perfect fit. Thank you.
Thanks for your motion. Seeing no one in the queue or online, I will call the question. Counselor O'Toole? Yep.
In favor.
Thanks for that. Moving on to the third item of business today, Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council appoint Linda Murphy as the Chair of the Assessment Review Board for the term ending December 31, 2023. Just to speak to that, I was a public member and a council member on this committee and got to work with Linda several times, and I thought she was very thorough, so I think she'll make a great chair.
Thanks for that, Counselor Palat. Seeing no one in the queue or online with questions or debate, I'll call the question. Counselor O'Toole?
In favor.
Thank you for that. Counselor O'Toole, in favor. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to our last item of business in this portion, I will recognize Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council authorize the mayor to vote in favor of the Ocatera appointments to the board as recommended. Just to speak to this, the mayor represents us when we go voting in Ocatera, and I know that the board also works very diligently to make sure we have great candidates that get put before the stakeholders to be elected to that board.
Perfect. Thank you for that motion. I will call the question. Please vote. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I will. Counselor O'Toole, in favor.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole. Before I move on, I just wanted to recognize, sorry, that carries unanimously. Before I move on, I want to recognize the significant work that members of our communities do. If you want to get more engaged in your community, you want to learn more about what's going on, I strongly encourage you to apply. There's a list of committees and boards that we're looking for community members on. And so these people that were appointed today are volunteering their time, but they're really making an impact in their community. So thank you to them and encourage people in the future to put their name forward. Moving on to committee business, first item of business is Standing Committee from Strategic Strategy and Communications Services Committee Meeting held April 25. And I'll recognize Chair Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council adopt a minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee Meeting of April 25, 2023, as presented.
Thank you for that. My apologies. That motion is in order. I will call the question.
Counselor O'Toole, in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg, you have one item of business tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I, to introduce it, I think I'm going to throw it over to Director McEckern.
Ms. McEckern.
Thank you. Through the chair. This is a procedure bylaw amendment, C-12997. Sorry, I'm just bringing it up here. And it is an amendment to the bylaw, which allows for virtual, virtual sittings of committees and council meetings.
Thank you, Chief McEckern. And just speaking to this, we have, I guess, back in the COVID days, Zoom became the norm. Coming out of it, we were allowing six Zoom meetings per year. But what we have found with our very, very active council, as we can see by two members being away today at city business, that number just isn't adequate. We've got Mayor Clayton sitting on a number of, of boards and committees, Counselor Bressi on Alberta municipalities as well. So with this active council that we have, we're finding that six just isn't enough. So that's what this bylaw amends, is to increase that.
Perfect. That motion is in order. So this is first reading. No discussion or debate on first reading of the amendment of the procedure bylaw. So I'll call the question on first reading. Counselor O'Toole?
In favor.
Bressi, in favor.
Counselor Palat?
Palat, in favor.
That carries unanimously. Counselor Berg?
I would like to move council give second reading to bylaw C-1299F.
Perfect. So this is second reading, an opportunity for questions, discussion and debate. Recognizing Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I won't be able to support this. I appreciate what Ben's trying to do here, and I think we definitely have to make a change. But I think just to make it open and delete it altogether and have it where you could attend all of your meetings by Zoom or virtually, doesn't work for me. So I'll be looking for, make an amendment, and I hope we defeat this as it is made now.
Perfect. Your comments are appreciated. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I appreciate, I appreciate Counselor Palat coming forward and actually look forward to his amendment. I may or may not vote for it. As it stands right now, and as I stated at committee, I can't support this motion going forward. I think it's, it gives too much leeway to future councillors to determine whether or not they want to be inside a council chamber. And I think we do have to have certain rules in and around that. There are some examples around the province where there are members of a council that haven't even showed up for a meeting because they don't like a coworker. So I don't want to have those issues here. A big part of our job is to be in the public eye, and this is kind of like the half circle of that eye, as the cameras are on us. So I think it's, it's important and imperative that we're all here. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will be supporting this, but I think that if we pass this, additional work is needed to do with our code of conduct to still make sure that people are making reasonable efforts to show up in person. I think that in person is definitely ideal. That should be the norm, showing up in person. And I'm really confident that with this council, that that will be the norm. But we also do need to protect future councils, and maybe there are people that don't value that in person, and we should, we should do that. But for, for me personally, I'm running into a situation where council endorsed me running for Alberta municipalities, which requires me to be in Edmonton, either to chair meetings or to meet with ministers regularly. And I'm getting to the point where I'm strategically choosing whether or not I'm going to call into a meeting, because I'm looking at and going, wow, there's not anything hugely important on this agenda, so maybe I'll skip this meeting so that later in the year, if there's a meeting where there's something critical on it, I can call into that. And I don't think I'm doing the people who elected me any favors when I have to strategically choose which meetings I can and can't participate in. I think I'm a much more effective councillor when, when I'm out of town doing business, the city that council asks me to do, if I'm able to call into every meeting. So I hope that council will support this, or at least end up at someplace where there is some difference made, so that I can continue to be an effective councillor participating in meetings, even while out of town, doing business this council asks me to do.
Thank you for those comments, Counselor Bressi. Do want to let, remind council that if there was an amendment preferred, that this would be the appropriate time for that. And then we would bring back third reading in two weeks' time. I'll clarify it, Ms. Hanson, to the next council meeting. All right. Recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Unless there is an amendment on the floor, I would be supporting this motion. I think that saying, you know, I, I want to make a different motion, so I ask you to defeat that, and then not telling us what that motion may be, is not as direct as it could be. So my preference is, if there is an amendment, let's have it now. Otherwise, I will support the motion as is.
Perfect. Thanks for your comments. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess I was, so I was trying to be nice, because I was told I was being mean earlier. But I'll just make an amendment, then I think that we should make it 16. In our, in our current thing right now, it says the, the member does not exceed the maximum of six committee days or six council meetings. I'm willing to make that 16. That's two-thirds of them that you could miss. I think that's a lot. That's more, more than a month. I don't think that'll put us out of bounds, but that forces us to at least have a third of the time that we're actually in council meetings. I think it's a safe number. I don't think we're, I, I don't think anybody's going to exceed 16. But I think at least it's set some goalposts. And to Counselor's, Bressi's comments about making changes to our bylaw, I, I just want a rule. I want a hard, fast rule. I think this goes to code of conduct and other things that, that just gets mucky to me. It seems like then we're going to ask administration to go figure out whether we should have been there, shouldn't have been there. It just seems gray and mucky to me. So I'd rather just make the real hard, fast, and go with 16. It's more than I originally wanted to do, but I think it's a safe number for now, and we can always look at this again in the future.
Thanks for that, Counselor Palat. I'm just going to jump in the queue here. I appreciate the intent of your, your amendment. I do agree that there needs to be a change. There is significant work that's done by people like Counselor Thiessen on the Peace Watershed Alliance, Counselor Bressi, myself. I sit on an Alberta Munis Economic Development Committee. If we're making the intent to be part of the meeting, we shouldn't be penalized because we're still doing significant work while we're calling in online. The procedure bylaw was not intended to penalize councillors that are still active and, and participating and contributing to the meetings. The procedure bylaw was to restrict councillors who actually aren't making that effort. So changing the number, I think, is probably a good step. I was okay with the motion initially. I think that this is about being present in your work and not about penalizing people in regards to, as Counselor Bressi mentioned, choosing not to join a meeting because it'll go as a mark against your, against the number that you were allowed. So I think if your intent is good, you're away doing council business, and you are able to fit in a Zoom call or as a meeting to participate in a standing committee or a council, that, that should be allowed. So there's a few other people in the queue, and then I'll call the question on the amendment. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I'm, if a number is the right thing to do, I'm, believe it or not, I'm in favor with what Counselor Bressi had mentioned. Code of Conduct will divide, will separate and guide us. I think if you have something that's a little bit concerned, then you won't be able to make a meeting. We could have a sit down with the mayor or the city manager and make arrangements if this was a viable reason to not miss the meeting. There's a lot of things we can do, but I don't like a hard number.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Counselor Blackmore?
I'm seeking a point of clarification from Counselor Palat. The original bylaw states that we can miss six council meetings and six standing and six standing committee meetings. If you're changing that number to 16, is that 16 altogether or 16 of each? I just would like some more clarification. And if it's 16 altogether, I feel the number's too low. Although, like Counselor O'Toole, I don't feel that a number is the best solution.
And just to clarify, it's not missing, it's calling in virtually.
Yeah, it was 16 for each. So in essence, that'd be two thirds of the meetings for council. If there's 24 a year and two thirds of committee, then you could actually still do it via Zoom.
Thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, I guess I'll support your motion, Counselor Plott. I was thinking about it, but all this talk about code of conduct, and I just think we could address code of conduct with the old bylaw. If somebody went over, we get sent off to do work, but at the same time as the work that we're doing as city counselors, we also have choices. Some are mandatory, some are discretionary. If we're missing council meetings and committee meetings constantly for discretionary expenses, like for, let's say, a conference we wanted to go see or whatnot, nothing that we've been mandated to go do, I think we're working around the choice of our job, but not necessarily the duty of our job. So then that would be a choice for us to call in virtually. And that can be dealt with code of conduct, too, even if people went over. So 16 isn't too high. To me, it's not, I don't know. It's a number. I'd call it eight and eight. I'd look for kind of a separation on it all. But I think when we're talking about code of conduct, I think respectfully, we all sit around this table, and we understand the work that we do. And I think this is for the eyes that are looking in, seeing us, and why is this person absent? Why is that person absent? I think in understanding that we have mandatory appointments to certain committees, we should know that, and we shouldn't penalize people for it. And so that's easily addressed through code of conduct. So I guess for me, I'll go with the eight and eight, the 16 to the 16. I still think it's high, even, it could be higher. But I think our job is to be here. No, no, it was eight. It was.
No, it's 16 and 16.
16 and 16. Oh, gosh, that's way too high.
Two thirds.
Yeah, two thirds. Yeah, that's way too high. Sorry, dude. I don't think I'm gonna, well, we'll see. We're going no limits or a big limit. We'll go from there.
Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, that was my question as well. Some clarification on is it just council meetings or committee meetings as well? So we're roughly at about 40 meetings a year. So 20, 20, 20. We have breaks, too, right? So yeah, 16 and 16 is more than fair, I think. And I wouldn't say people are absent when they're doing this. They're just in a different location. So to me, absence, absence, and you're not part of the conversation.
Thanks for that. And just clarification, this is not 16 standing committees meetings, right? So we have multiple standing committee meetings. It's 16 committee days. 16 committee days, 16 council days. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you. My apologies for getting a little bit philosophical here, but
Oh, jeez.
I really hate that politics these days is becoming about us talking about how do we craft the perfect letters of the rule, or letters of the rules, rather than talking about how do we aspire to follow the spirit of the rules? And for me, I think a number should be taken out completely of this because, so we allow 16 meetings? Well, just if we really had a terrible council or get elected who really didn't care about the job, they could call in virtually for their 16 meetings. And then if you read the MGA, they actually only have to participate in a meeting every eight weeks. So they still could get through the whole year without ever attending council and chambers. And so if we're really trying to craft the letter of the rules, I don't think that helps us out. Instead, I'd rather be a body that says, no, we really expect you to make an effort to show up in person. We're going to put it in our code of conduct that you're going to expect reasonable effort, and we're going to expect you to follow the spirit of getting together in person to collaborate with your colleagues, to collaborate with members of the public that come in. And so for me, the more and more prescriptive we get and the more time we talk, or we're talking about the specifics, instead of just saying this is what we expect as a community out of our elected officials, the more I think we're trending into what's becoming the negative side of politics these days. And so for me, let's just aspire to be here whenever possible and trust each other to make reasonable efforts and do the hard work of when somebody's not making those reasonable efforts, actually figuring that out as a body, rather than having to really craft every little detail of the letter of the rules.
Thanks for your comments. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do hear what you're saying, Counselor Bressi. I do have concerns with that. I'd like to see what this code of conduct looks like before I'd vote on it, only because perception is just that, everybody's individual. And what means something to you may mean something totally different to other people. You know, when the Bible started, it was like one. And now there's versions of thousands out there. So I think perception is indicative of how this plays out. So for me, I would, if the amendment included some time to look at a code of conduct, that's fine. But otherwise, maybe we would just hold off on this on both sides for me.
All right. Counselor Plott to close on the amendment.
What?
Oh, sorry. I apologize, Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you very much. I agree with Counselor Bressi that this is a little too prescriptive. And I think we've got a rule, and we have administration come back and tell us, you know, that we should eliminate this because it's too prescriptive. So you make every effort, put it in our code of conduct, make every effort to be here and be engaged. I'll make every effort to zoom in. I do not like missing meetings. So I won't be in favor of this amendment.
And I'll go to Counselor Plott to close. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I can appreciate the comments about it being prescriptive. I get that, but that's kind of our job. We should be being prescriptive on that. I don't think going to a code of conducts is a really healthy thing for our organization, in my opinion. And I think that gets, I'll say it again. I think that you're going to have to get really good at wordsmithing, and then you're going to have the administration go by and do a lot of work on our organization to say, should Counselor Bressi have been there or not? And I just don't see how that's going to work well. I don't think anybody in this room's going to miss two thirds of the meetings. I don't think that, I personally thought the number should have been lower, and I wanted to make it lower originally. But I think this is a fair number that's not going to put the organization at any risk. The reason this amendment changes here right now is from my understanding is the organization is at risk because we are going to potentially break a bylaw that's currently in force. So this was about updating a bylaw to make it something that can work. I think we can all do a gut check and go, could we make 16 of these via Zoom and only eight in person? And that would be if you made all 24 of the meetings for committee and all 24 meetings for council. One thing, when I went through our quarterly statements, and I'm sure it's probably been a higher number, is now that we have this hybrid model, we're all attending meetings much more frequently, and I think that's great. But I still don't think you're going to miss more than eight. And so I really hope you guys can support this. It gives us a lot of latitude for administration to work with. I don't see us having any issues of not, of somebody having an issue with not making at least eight meetings out of an entire calendar year. So I can hope you can support 16. I think that's a very safe number. That's two thirds of your meetings via Zoom.
And just, you clarified it at the end, but it's not about missing meetings. It's about using Zoom. All right. So I will call the question. So this is on the amendment to amend the procedure bylaw to, which would amend it to insert 16 committee days and 16 council meetings. Call the question, please vote.
Counselor O'Toole, not in favor.
And that is defeated for the five. So now we are, unless I see anyone else in the queue with another amendment, which I don't. So now we are, I'm going to call the question on second reading to bylaw C-1299-F.
Counselor O'Toole in favor.
And that carries six to three. Moving on, Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that counsel have third reading of bylaw C-1299-F at this meeting.
Thank you. That motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, it must pass unanimously. I will call the question, seeing no one in the queue.
Counselor O'Toole in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that counsel give third reading to bylaw C-1299-F, being an amendment to the procedure bylaw.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue or online, I will call the question.
Counselor O'Toole in favor.
And that carries seven to two. Some highlights through your meeting, Counsel. Oh, my apologies, Counselor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to make a follow-up motion.
Go for it.
And that would be, I would like to move the council direct administration to bring back to the appropriate standing committee amendments to the council code of conduct to require counselors to make reasonable effort to attend council and committee meetings in person. And just to speak to this, our code of conduct, I understand what's getting said about, hey, our code, this isn't something that has a black and white, you followed or not. But I just highlight that that's exactly the nature of our code of conduct. The very first real thing the code of conduct says in it is, "Elected officials shall act honestly in good faith and shall consider the welfare and the best interests of the city as a whole at all times." That's not something that's black and white. You could say, yeah, somebody's doing that or not. It is, the code of conduct parts of it are aspirational documents that are talking about the values we have as a council. And I think it's worthwhile to say, we as a council value you making reasonable efforts, get here in person and collaborate face to face with people. It's, I think that the part of the code of conduct, is this something that you could actually, would it be easy or even possible to investigate and come to a real determination of is somebody making reasonable effort? Yes or no? Probably not. But I know the code of conduct. In my whole time on council, there hasn't actually been a code of conduct complaint formally brought forward but against the council my whole time in council. But this is still something that I think we as a body measure ourselves against, against to make sure it's kind of the norms of how we see this group operating. And so I think this would be a worthwhile norm to put in the document that says this is how we conduct ourselves.
All right. So that motion is in order. I'll recognize Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I also will support this motion. I think having it put into our code of conduct puts the rubber, we'll meet the road here. And that's what we get measured on. So I'm in support.
All right. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just want to ask, I don't know if it's our CEO or city solicitor, what they would consider reasonable effort? So if my vehicle was broke down, or I just, my wife took my car and I couldn't get to work, is that a reasonable effort that I would have tried to make the meeting? I'm just trying to figure out where the teeth are in this.
I'll let Mr. Nicolay respond, but I remind counselor that unless somebody files a complaint against the code of conduct, it's not like a daily assessment from administration or council saying whether or not the reasonable effort was made. But Mr. Nicolay?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I'm going to answer that a bit evasively. If this motion passes, management will be directed to go away and make the appropriate amendment and bring it back to a standing committee. In the report that covers that proposed amendment, I'll make sure that we elaborate on things that might be vagaries that will need to be discussed and perhaps rendered more precise through council.
So this will have another touch point when this comes back to deliberate then.
Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm not in support of this motion at all. I think not only does it have no teeth, it doesn't even have dentures. We're going to send administration away to do work for work. How do we prove it out? So they're going to create an amendment to a code of conduct bylaw that's going to require us to make reasonable efforts to attend council meetings? It sounds like we're going to send administration off to go chase their own tails, trying to figure out what we want through this motion. So in the spirit of, I guess, someone like Clyde Blackburn, who would have been here every single day despite the fact that he was diagnosed with leukemia and dying, if he had this and he had to reasonably make an effort to show up in person, then he would. And it wouldn't be to the best of Clyde Blackburn. So there's really literally no teeth. And I hate nothing more than sending administration off on fairy tale goose chases. So I'm not going to support this at all. Thank you.
Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Well, I guess for me, our opportunity was last vote. And so we did talk about perception and how others can view the perception of whether they can or can't make it. So it was carried to move this bylaw along and not take Counselor Plott's view on this. So I guess for me, it's second best. So that's what I'll go with. So I will support it.
Thanks for that. I'll just add, I remind people around the table and those who may be watching that the work that council does when they're not in the chambers is as significant. I also think that there are many times when council may be not in the best physical state, sick. We don't want people here getting other people sick. I know that the example, your car breaks down, so you're sitting on the side of the road for somebody to give you a tow truck. Should you not call in when you're fully capable to participate? So I think there are circumstances when council needs that option of virtual. And I'll now turn it over to Counselor Bressi for close.
I just highlight against council, we've got a very general section of our code of conduct where there are things that very much aren't black and white. For example, "Elected officials shall respect the city as institution and shall encourage public respect for the city." It's, when we put that in the bylaw, I don't know how you'd ever ask administration to go and make a report on, hey, did this elected official bring disrepute to the city as an institution? That's not a fairy tale that we put that in there. It's something that, we've got vagaries in there. Because again, this is a document that outlines our values, our values as an organization. And this isn't a hard thing to put in a bylaw. You're talking like we're making all this work for administration. Literally adding one line in our general section of our code of conduct that we value in-person meetings, you should make reasonable effort, isn't burdensome. It's not a black and white thing. But again, so many things in that bylaw aren't. Let's show that we've got values in case we ever do get somebody elected that doesn't value that face-to-face collaboration. Let's make sure we've got something in here so that the next council, if it needs to, can say, no, you need to get your butt in chambers if you can get your butt into chambers. Because again, there are some councils that are struggling with that. I like the change we just made because if I'm sick or if my car breaks down, or if I'm doing city business, sure, I shouldn't be penalized for that. But if I just don't want to get out of my pajamas, then I should get out of my pajamas and get here. And we should have some hook somewhere that lets us tell colleagues if we ever need to, no, you're not making reasonable effort, we're calling you on that. So I hope the council will support this.
Thanks. I appreciate that close, Counselor Bressi. I missed recognizing Counselor O'Toole. So I'm going to ask Counselor O'Toole if he had something to add. And if you still choose to close again, I'll allow that. Counselor O'Toole?
I have nothing to add. I said what I said before. I said, if you know that you're not going to be able to make a meeting and that sort of thing, we can still talk to the mayor, still talk to the city manager, and let them know that you will not be in the meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, that code of conduct directs us as counselors. It's, enough said.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi, do you wish to close? All right. I'll call the question.
Counselor O'Toole in favor.
And that carries seven to two. Moving on, seeing no one else in the queue. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Berg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just opening it up here. All right. So Chief McEchran updated us on a few things. Municipal affairs has given us permission to do a 2024 municipal census. Corporate communications, Grand Prairie Police Service website with a launch date set for the beginning of June. set for the beginning of June. And the city has announced a provincial grant of 275,430 to go to low-income transit pass programs. Intergovernmental affairs, the city is going to co-host an event with the MD of Greenview, County of Grand Prairie, and the city at the FCM Conference coming up later this month. Over in HR, the first administrative networking meeting, as part of the city's recognition for professional administrative staff, was held last week. And corporate marketing, phase one of the strategic brand project is complete. The first draft of phase two will be presented the week of May 8th. Administration currently planning Grand Prairie Police Service branding, as well as GPPS Transition Awareness Education Program.
All right. Thank you for that update, Counselor Berg. Moving on to the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting of April 25th. Counsel Blackmore.
I would ask council to adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held April 25th, as presented.
Right, that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with errors or omissions, I'll call the question.
Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore, you have a few items of business.
Yes, we're going to start with the quarter four 2022 financial report. I'll read the two motions and then ask Chief White Way if she would like to speak to provide any more. So I move that council receive the unaudited financial statements and supporting information for the year ending December 31st, 2022, for information. And secondly, to approve the transfer of the 2022 operating surplus of $2,018,000 to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. And Chief White Way.
Ms. White Way.
Thank you for that, Mayor Clayton. I'll just add just a few points. Management's surplus presented of two, just over 2 million, is just over a 1-point percent variance from the operating budget that was approved. So we had recommended that it be transferred to the reserve. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that clarification. I will recognize comments or questions. Counsel Bressi.
You can request a split.
Absolutely. So that will split those motions. And now discussion or debate on item number one. Seeing no one in the queue or online, I'll call the question on the first motion to receive the unaudited financial statements and supporting information for the year ending December 31st, 2022, for information. Call the question. Please vote. Counsel O'Toole.
Counsel O'Toole. Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That carries unanimously. Now moving on to the second part of the motion. Just waiting for it to load. One second. Council, so the second part of the motion, and we'll open it up for discussion or debate, is that council approve the transfer of 2022 operating surplus of 2,000, 2,018,000 to the Financial Stability Stabilization Reserve. Comments and questions, discussion, debate? Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll be voting notes this. In my mind, the Financial Stabilization Reserve is our rainy day fund, and I think that it's adequately funded to help us deal with any unexpected financial difficulties we might have in the future, whether that's a big event that requires unexpected costs, or whether that's a big loss of revenue. I think we've got enough funding there and enough flexibility in other reserves and through other financial strategies, so we don't need to be increasing our rainy day fund. I'd hope the council would put this money somewhere where it can be doing really good in the community in the next little bit. If we did defeat this, some options for it would be, there was talk about, there was a recommendation that originally came to committee to use it to help fund our police transition, because we know that in years four and five, we might need to find municipal money for that, although that might be fully covered by the, by other levels of government, but we might need to cover that. Or we know that we're taking serious steps to maybe build a new recreation facility, a new field house in the community. Well, putting money towards that instead of adventure would be really nice. Or affordable housing's a big priority that I've heard council talking about. Maybe we could put our strategic initiatives reserves so that we've got, so we've got some seed, seed funding there. I just think there's so many good uses that the community could see from this funding right now that I don't want it just going in a rainy day fund. I want it going somewhere where we're making it really clear that we intend to use this money we collected last year for immediate use in the community.
All right, thanks for your comments, Counsel Bressi. Recognizing Counsel Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just, I guess, I just need to clarify it from administration. If we put the money in Financial Stabilization Reserve and then decide in six months we want to build an affordable housing project, or we want to spur on economic development, can we not just pull it out at that point and reallocate it?
Ms. White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, council can decide to use the Financial Stabilization Reserve for whatever purpose you choose.
Okay, so I was pretty sure that. So having said that, I think we should just support this motion. It makes sense to put it there. If we change our mind in time and we want to earmark it for something else specifically, then we can earmark it for that. I guess this has been our practice for all the years I've been around. I thought that we, this, when we have a surplus, we put it there because it's what we wanted to do to build reserves. It's, it was, it was a surplus, it wasn't planned. So it's nice to spot it or to put it for now. And council had entered discretion at any time, can reallocate that funding. So I just think it's better to put it there than trying to guess where we should stick it for now, and then, and then finding out we have the wrong fund. So I'm in support of the motion.
Right. Just a comment, Counsel Bressi, if, I think that if you had another intent, an amendment might be preferred. So, and speaking to that, I think that there are options for council. I do think that has indicated that if the money were to be used for potentially year four or five of police transition or a housing project, those are things that qualify quite nicely for council strategic initiatives. If you're not comfortable with the Financial Stabilization Reserve, just, it would be better to have an indication for council to debate where you'd rather see that. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I wasn't sure if that went against the intent of the motion or not, so that's why I didn't move it, but happy to, happy to make amendment. So I would move that council change, strike Financial Stabilization Reserve and put it, and replace it with council strategic initiatives. And for me, yeah, I do respect that we could pull it out of the Financial Stabilization Reserve anytime we want, really, but that's signaling to the community, hey, we're knocking into our rainy day money. Why are you knocking into your rainy day money? And I think rightly some people get their feathers up if we're doing that when it's not something they see as a true emergent priority. I think just having it somewhere where we're signaling, no, we really are going to find a strategic way to use this money in a more immediate fashion is just a better place to, place to park it for now. I did hear the comments about this has been the city's usual practice. Well, yeah, that's true. And I think there was an argument five years ago that we needed to bolster up that rainy day, rainy day fund. But I think we're at a time, we've been doing really exceptional work to figure out a reserve strategy. I really don't think that there's the same argument there was years ago, say we need to keep on funding that rainy day fund.
So that amendment is in order. If you're in the queue to discuss or debate the amendment, great. If you're not, come back and, back into the queue. I'll recognize Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was literally going to ask Counselor Bressi if he would consider moving it to the, to the Strategic Initiative Fund. So I will absolutely be supporting this. I think that is the best place for it. So thank you for the clarification.
All right, recognizing Counsel Blackmore.
Agreed. There's no real fund that I want to put it in more than the other, but what I do want to point out is the Financial Stabilization Fund is not a rainy day fund. It's an, it's a un-reserved fund. So it just means that the money that gets put in there is not restricted in where it gets, where it gets spent. So all of our money is spent wisely by council direction. So I don't, I take exception to the term rainy day fund. Having said that, though, again, whether it's in, whether it's in the Financial Stabilization Fund or council strategic initiatives, initiatives, it's going to be spent wisely, and it's going to be spent with thought. So it doesn't matter to me which one of the two it goes into. I just don't like the term rainy day fund.
All right, Counsel Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I won't support the motion as much as I think it would be a good spot to put it. I remember last term, when our administration did a lot of hard work and actually gave us a fund for council strategic priorities, and we, and we had it. And like kids, we blew through that cash in quite a big span. And my fear is if we put this $2 million in there, we're going to feel more obligated to spend it. And I don't want to suspend it just to spend it. And my fear is by putting that council fund is, that's where it's sitting. Now the community's looking at us whenever all these requests come in going, we have money, you have $2 million more kicking around, you got the coffers, take it out. So I just, I think it gets us in the weeds of spending $50,000 here and $20,000 there, and that's fine if that's what council wants to do. But we can do that at any point in time through anyone, through our financial stabilization reserve. So I don't, as much as I like the intent, I just, I think that actually puts the organization at a bigger risk that we have a council that comes along. Because once it's there, a council comes along, oh, boy, we should spend this money and do something for the community. So to Counsel Blackmore's point, I think we spend all of our money wisely. I just, just put it in financial stabilization, like leave it there and we can pick from there where it goes.
Counsel Tison.
Yeah, very similar to Counselor Plott's. We're really good at finding things that are good strategic things in the moment. And a lot of times when administration comes to us with a recommendation from reserves, if they don't think it's within our strategic alignment, they make certain recommendations. And many times that comes forward from the council strategic initiatives fund. And because it's there, we think it's ours to spend in this term. We didn't carry over a budget into this council term from the previous council term. My concern is, is we won't carry a budget into the next council term from this council term. So I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we have an appropriate amount of reserves available to us at all times in case the bottom falls out in the world, which we've already seen once before. So I think the Financial Stabilization Reserve and the motion as originally intended is an appropriate place to put this, this overage as recommended from our administration. Thank you.
All right, I reckon I don't see anyone in line with comments. So I will go to Counselor Bressi to close on the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just looking one thing up. Yeah, so just, just for, for me, when I, when I read the, thank you, Counsel Blackmore, for calling me on using perhaps overly simplified language. I do appreciate, appreciate that because we should be talking about more precisely maybe than I was. But when I read the purpose of the Financial Stabilization Reserves, it says to provide funds to stabilize tax rates and protect against fluctuating revenues and expenditures by providing funds for emergent, one-time expenses or losses of revenues. For me, I think that two priorities we've been talking a lot about is affordable housing, and we've been talking about the soccer dome. And, and I think those are both things that could use funding that aren't emergent one-time, one-time things. So for me, at the end of the day, maybe it doesn't really matter. Maybe I'm just getting too persnickety about the exact place things go, but I just don't think the Financial Stabilization Reserve is the best place to be parking money if we actually want to use it for good community uses to drive forward strategic initiatives.
All right, that is Counsel Bressi's close on the amendment to, that the motion would be to strike Financial Stabilization Reserve and insert Council Strategic Initiatives Fund. I'll call the question on the amendment.
Counsel O'Toole, not in favor.
And this is defeated four to five. I will now go to the original motion. The council approved the transfer of the 2022 operating surplus of $2,018,000 to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. Seeing no one in the queue for discussion or debate, and no one online, I will call the question.
Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
And that is carried unanimously. Moving on, Counsel Blackmore.
I would move that council approve the audited consolidated financial statements of the city of Grand Prairie for the year ended December 31st, 2022. And again, I would ask that Chief White Way introduce this matter.
Ms. White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I'll just be brief. The audited, 2022 audited consolidated financial statements were presented to committee last week. And as part of the process, prior to submission to municipal affairs, we do require that they be adopted and approved by council here tonight. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that introduction. Counsel Blackmore.
The only thing I would add is that the financial statements, the audit process went quite smoothly, although it was lengthy as it always is, and that the city is in good financial health and our audited statements are clean.
All right, I see no one in the queue with questions, discussion, or debate, so I will call the question.
Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
That carries unanimously. Moving on to the next item of business, Counsel Blackmore.
So the next item of business is bylaw C-1459, which is a special recreation service tax bylaw. This, the Community Neighborhoods Association of Pinnacle Ridge pays a special tax in order to fund the fountain that is at their entrance feature. And so this, this motion, this deals with that. And the amount of money that they will be paying in extra taxes is $12.50 per household. So I would ask that council give first reading to bylaw C-1459.
Perfect. So that is a motion to give first reading to bylaw C-16, C-1459, being the special recreation services tax bylaw. No discussion or debate on first reading. So I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
Thank you for that. And that carries unanimously. Counsel Blackmore.
And I would move council give second reading to bylaw C-1459.
Perfect. An opportunity for discussion or debate, recognizing Counsel Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Weirdly enough, I'm not going to support this motion. I was going to make a comment at committee. But when I look at our thing, our number one item, quality of life, fierce community pride, I have a hard time that we're charging $12.50 for people in Pinnacle for a fountain. I drive on O'Brien, and I love seeing that fountain. When I come in from the north end of town, I think that's one of the nicest features. You see the Eastland Center to the west, to the east, and you see a fountain to the west. And I, when I think of our community and we want to try to create more pride, it saddens me a little bit that we're going to charge everybody in that area $12.50 to have a fountain on. I think that's part of community pride. If other areas of town started having fountains and they started, if, if Rail Oaks is the next one that has a nice fountain going on, and they decide not to, we're just going to shut the fountain off. So I guess for me, it just sets a little bit of a precedence. It's $8,250. I think it should just come out of Parks and Rec, and I'm, you know, I'm sure, it's not that we just find money everywhere, but for me, I just, I think this is a community use, not just people in Pinnacle. There's people that live in Pinnacle that probably don't even drive by this pond, but then see this, this thing in operation that are paying $12.50. So not, not a hill to die on for me, but I just, it does sadden me when I think about seeing fierce community pride as our top thing, and that we're going to charge people $12.50 to turn a fountain on. So I can't support it.
All right, Counsel Tison.
Well, Counselor Plott, it seems like we're agreeing on a lot of things today except this, because the neighborhood has canvassed many, many times over and asked, especially when we were about to decommission the water fountain because of the expensiveness of the parts years ago. And when they were canvassed, they said, we want this fountain, we love this fountain. It's, it marks our neighborhood. And so they're okay with the $12.50. And to me, that seems like community pride. It means like, oh, well, for two coffees, I can have a beautiful feature in front of my entrance. I'm not even going to notice it over the course of 12 months. It's a buck out of my, my coffers every single month. So I think they pay for the community pride, and they get, they pay a pretty decent dollar for it. That's a good deal that we give them at $12.50. And I'm also very proud of it. I think it's a great feature. And I hope that we have more in our neighborhoods, and I hope other neighborhoods show that same type of community pride in there. You aren't afraid to pay a little extra for something super awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions, discussion, debate? Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
Bressi, in favor.
And that's carried seven to two. Count, so moving on, Counsel Blackmore.
I would move that council have three, have third reading of bylaw C-1459 at this meeting.
So that motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must pass unanimously. Call the question.
Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
In favor.
Counsel Bressi, in favor. That carries unanimously. Counsel Blackmore.
And finally, I would move that council have, I would move council give third reading to bylaw C-1459, 1460.
59. You were right the first time.
Okay.
All right.
You're right. My thing is moved to the next one already.
This is third reading for bylaw C-1459, being the special recreation services tax bylaw. Call the question.
Counsel O'Toole, in favor.
Bressi, in favor.
That carries eight to one. And now moving on, Counsel Blackmore.
I would move council give first reading to bylaw C-1460, being the 2023 property tax bylaw. And I'm going to ask Chief White Way to introduce this as well.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Ms. White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the property tax bylaw today does include the proposed increase of 1.71% for the 2023 average tax amount. Included in the administrative report presented to committee was the average Included in the administrative report presented to committee, um, was the averages, uh, uh, the average impact to both residential and non-residential. Um, so that 1.71% is reflected there as well as the, uh, required changes to, uh, the requisitions. So there will be an approximate decrease of 3.5% to the education tax levy and there'll be an increase of approximately 13.1% to the grand spirit requisition. Thank you.
All right. So this is first reading. Seeing no discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call the question.
Councillor O'Toole, in favor.
Perfect. And that motion carries unanimously councillor Blackmore.
And I would move council give second reading to bylaw C-1460 being the property tax bylaw. And speaking to this, um, I would say, um, I, last fall, this council worked very hard to make sure that we kept, uh, tax increases to a very minimal amount at a time when inflation costs are very high, as we all know. Uh, we understand that all of our residents are under the pressure of every time they go to the grocery store or the gas pumps or need to buy anything to, uh, support their families. So we're very aware of that. Over the last four years, our tax increases remain below zero on average. So, um, I think that we've done, we've done the best we can and I hope that people understand that and support that.
That motion is, or sorry, that, uh, recognizing councillor Blackmore's introduction, seeing anyone else for discussion or debate on second reading. I'll call the question.
Councillor O'Toole, in favor.
And that carries unanimously councillor Blackmore.
I'd move that council have through, third reading of bylaw C-1460 at this meeting.
That motion is in order. As with the other ones, this motion must pass unanimously for us to have third reading here tonight. Call the question. Sorry, I apologize. Councillor Bressi, no, you're, okay. Uh, call the question.
Councillor O'Toole, in favor.
And that carries unanimously councillor Blackmore.
And finally, I would ask council to give third lead, third reading to bylaw C-1460 being the 2023 property tax bylaw.
All right. So that motion is in order recognizing councillor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of the work our administration's done to make sure we're keeping costs at below inflation. I know for me, I've got a pretty average size, according to stats Canada anyways, I'm very average sized family, very average sized income for Grand Prairie. According to our assessment department, my house is about bang on the average. And I know for me, this annual increase to my property tax bill is going to be less than my monthly increase to my grocery bill over the last little while. So for, so for me, I think that this is a reasonable thing that we're doing to make sure that we can maintain city services. And at a time where families are struggling, we, it's more important than ever to have really great parks for them to go play with their kids and to have accessible city cultural programming, to have a fire department that can take care of them when they are at the worst moment of their life. And so for me, this is a reg, uh, reasonable, um, property tax bylaw that we're putting forward. So I'm voting in favor.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one else, I'll call the question.
Councillor O'Toole, votes in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting councillor Blackmore.
Uh, much of the business that we've talked about tonight really, uh, has, has wrapped up a lot of outstanding things, uh, that have been happening with financial services. Uh, the only real highlight I have is that, um, assessment and taxation appeal process is underway. Uh, appeals, appeals will be scheduled between July and October. Um, if you were wishing to make an appeal, you've missed that deadline. So this will only be for appeals that made the deadline. And of the number of appeals that will be reviewed, only one of them is from a resident, a residential. Um, other than that, uh, we look forward to a brand new slate of business next week.
All right. Thank you for your update. Moving on to the next item of committee business, 9.3, the Public and Protective Services Committee Meeting held April 25th. And I'll turn it to councillor, uh, deputy chair councillor O'Connor for introduction. Uh, sorry councillor Connor, just unmute please.
It was unmuted, but something happened. Anyway, I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee Meeting held April 25th, 2023 as presented.
That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue or online. Call the question. Councillor O'Toole.
In favor.
Thank you for that. Call the question, or sorry, that's carried unanimously. Uh, councillor O'Connor, you have one item of business for tonight.
Yes, uh, Mayor Clayton, I'd like to move, uh, I, I have three items. One, uh, move that, uh, advocate provincially for immediate and sustainable funding for the fire medical response, response services provided by Grand Prairie Fire Department. And two, advocate for Alberta Health Services to develop a strategy, an action plan to incent buys recruitment and retention of paramedics within the region and the north as a whole. And three, direct administration to research possible amendments to the Alberta 911 program standards for making provincial funding contingent to mandatory answer times, uh, 15 seconds or less and 95% of the time for both municipal GP 911 and secondary RCMP EMS.
So those motions.
That was a mofo.
Thanks councillor O'Connor. Those motions are in order. I know that there are representatives here from Grand Prairie Fire Department. If. Sorry, I'll get to that in one second. Um, if you, you wouldn't mind coming forward because I think there might be a couple of questions. Sorry, what? Okay. Councillor O'Connor, I understand, uh, in the, in your third motion, it's secondary ECMP EMS centers, not RCMP.
That's a huge, sorry.
Okay. So apparently that's a typo and it should be RCMP. So there we go. So councillor O'Connor is a mind reader. Well done. Okay. Yes. So gentlemen, if you could just introduce.
These are a lot of things.
Yeah. If you could just introduce yourselves for those who may be watching online and then I know there are a couple of questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, uh, Mayor Clayton. Preben Bosson, uh, fire chief. Mark Van Werken, deputy chief.
Perfect. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'll recognize councillor Teason and then I had a question as well.
Oh, I, I don't, I was only going to make statements. Uh, I don't have a question for these gentlemen. I want to support their cause. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I had a question in regards to item number two, advocating for Alberta Health Services to develop a strategy and action plan to incentivize recruitment and retention of paramedics within the region and the north as a whole. I understand there is some work, uh, being done provincially and I'm curious if this item actually needs to be here.
Thank you, Mayor. It's our understanding, uh, in the last week or two, we, we have received, uh, very reliable information, although we haven't seen anything public yet, that there is a very robust plan to incentivize and recruit not only paramedics, but other healthcare professionals, um, within hard to recruit areas, which generally is the rural and northern communities.
Okay. So you would be comfortable removing it? Uh, if it was removed, it would still meet your intent?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason I ask that, I just, it's a little bit, um, it's, you know, firefighters advocating for another industry and so it, it's a little bit sticky to me in regards to if EMS here was here saying, yes, advocate for us, but it's firefighters prescribing that. So I, I'm happy to hear that, uh, you are seeing traction on this. And so, um, I'm going to ask that we split the motions and, uh, if there's no further questions for our, um, delegation here today, I thank you for coming. I see no one else in the queue. So thank you for coming and appreciate you being here tonight. I will now open it up for discussion or debate on item number one, which is to advocate provincially for immediate and sustainable funding for the fire medical response services provided by the Grand Prairie Fire Department. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Yeah, definitely, definitely support this one. We're using municipal resources to respond to provincial responsibility. We definitely should get funding for that. But at the same time, I don't think our residents' expectation is that we get funding, um, just to spend less money on our fire, fire department. For me, really, I hope that we can have additional conversations as a council about if we do get funding, how are we going to enhance our medical response? For me, I wouldn't want to use this just to make our financials look better. If we got funding, I'd want to use it to give a better level of training to our firefighters to make sure they have better equipment to deal with situations when they're first on site and when they're, when they're helping an ambulance. And so for me, definitely support this, but want to make it clear why I support this because there's opportunities to enhance our citizens' health and the working environment of our firefighters, not just because I want to say, hey, province, give us more money.
Perfect. So councillor Blackmore.
Yeah, I want to echo what councillor Bressi said. Um, I think that, uh, currently we're expecting, uh, maybe not intentionally, but the unintentional results are we're, we're expecting firefighters to respond as first responders, um, when they don't have all of the medical resources that would make that an easier thing to do. So I, I would echo councillor Bressi that any money that may come from the province, which I will not hold my breath for, um, I would want to see enhanced medical response rather than offset budget lines.
All right. So seeing no one else in the queue, no one online, I'll call the question on item number one.
Councillor O'Toole, in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Uh, the second item of business is in your, uh, escribe, council advocate for AHS Services to develop a strategy and action plan to incentivize recruitment and retention of paramedics within the region and the north as a whole. Um, I will personally just jump in the queue. I think that as indicated that this is no longer required. I appreciate the original intent, but as we received an update today, uh, it, uh, appears that is no longer required. So I encourage council to defeat this one. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mayor Clayton, just for clarity because I hadn't seen that release. You're saying the AHS already has a strategy and action plan.
Yeah, as indicated by, um, our delegation here tonight, that they're, they've in recent weeks, uh, seen the initiatives being undertaken.
Thank you.
Councillor Blackmore.
Um, I'm wondering, Mayor Clayton, if it would perhaps be better to ask councillor O'Connor if he would withdraw the motion.
Sure.
Rather than defeat it, as I, I feel defeating the motion sends a message in itself.
Fair enough. Councillor O'Connor, are you comfortable rescinding?
I would love to remove, I will respectfully remove this item for vote.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Now we'll move on to item number three, council direct administration to research possible amendments to the Alberta 911 program standards that make provincial funding contingent on mandatory answer times, which is 15 seconds or less 95% of the time for both municipal GP 911 and secondary RCMP EMS centers. Comments or questions on this item? Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious and I'm not sure if it's to ask you or I'm not sure who to ask. Um, if that isn't, uh, met at 15 seconds, then what? What happens then?
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Currently, the wording in the Alberta 911 program is as should. Uh, all primary and secondary PSOPs should answer all calls in 15 seconds or less. Um, to my understanding, there is no funding that's contingent on meeting that performance indicator. And what we're suggesting is for us to research possible amendments to the 911 program that would make that mandatory. So that funding, which I believe is to the tune of around five and a half million dollars to AHS EMS dispatch and about $2 million to RCMP, would be contingent on answering all calls with a live operator, I should add, within 15 seconds or less, over 95% of the time, thereby decreasing the time on task of our primary 911 center that is sometimes, um, disproportionately affected by the high time on task pushing those calls forward.
Agreed. Accountability, I like that. Thank you.
I had a question as well on this item. Um, the motion is to, um, direct administration to research possible amendments. What do we think that this research entails? And I don't know if that's for Ms. Casualy or for Mr. Boson. What do you, is this hiring staff? Like what, what does this research entail?
Through the mayor, uh, this would be, uh, an undertaking we can do in-house with our staff currently. Uh, so we don't see this as being a huge project. Uh, it would probably draw some comparisons, uh, and kind of show in greater details where some of the challenges are from a primary PSOP and sort of pushing those calls down lines. So it'd be in-house.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Casualy.
Sorry. Thank you through the mayor. Um, administration would propose that we would, um, bring a report back to the appropriate standing committee once that research is completed.
Great. Thank you for that. All right. So seeing no one else in the queue or with their hand up online, I'll call the question on the second item in your escribe.
Councillor O'Toole, in favor.
Councillor O'Connor, in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Uh, highlights from your meeting councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thank you.
Uh, in community and social development, marking for youth week is underway. Activities and workshops will be held all this week, including recreation, learning and exploring what the city of Grand Prairie has to offer during free activities for youth ages 12 and up. Uh, under housing and homelessness, the RFP for the Coordinated Care Campus Service Provision will close May 8th. Renovations of the 63 supportive housing units remain to be on target to be complete at the end of May, right on. Uh, enforcement services, uh, preliminary meeting has taken place between enforcement and CKC Management School Division and Football League stakeholders regarding the upcoming football season and, uh, keep a tight rein on that one. Fire department, all grass fire, fire equipment has been serviced and placed on trucks as the summer season begins. The crews have already responded to several grass fires and I'd like to remind everyone, if you're driving along and you flick your cigarette out the window, they have chemicals in them that helps them keep burning and this may be the cause of grass fires. So please don't flick your cigarettes. Uh, sports development, wellness and culture, administration has completed a session with local community groups and, uh, event hosts and a new form for landing page has been created on the city's website. And lastly, uh, transit, a meeting was held with superintendents of the public and Catholic school boards and the youth fair program will commence at the beginning of the new school year and individual schools will be distributing the transit passes to students in September. So, and administration will be reaching out a piece sloppily. And that gives my report. Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks councillor O'Connor. And moving on to the Invest GP Standing Committee of April 25th, I'll turn this over to councillor Plott.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee held, uh, April 25th, 2023 as presented.
Perfect. That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue. I'll call the question.
Councillor O'Toole, in favor.
And that carries unanimously councillor Plott. Some highlights from your meeting.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Um, we had, uh, some survey survey updates and we continue to have more businesses open at Grand Prairie. We had nine new businesses opening, uh, three home base and six commercial under the real renewal stream. A total of 193 candidates have been endorsed, 321 employer applications are in progress and 533 positions are advertised and available. So it's, it just continues to be a success. So well done to that part of the city and our team there. Um, in advanced entertainment, our rural advantage, Alberta advantage will be playing with the local openers, the North Bloods on June 13th at the Bow. So that should be a great one. Uh, I believe tickets are on sale for that now. And planning and development, the municipal development plan consultation has begun on the city's website. So for folks that want to look up that.
Perfect. To that councillor Plott. Moving on to the Operational Services Committee Meeting of April 25th and a look to councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee Meeting held April 25, 2023, as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue or with questions online, I will call the question. Please vote.
Counselor O'Toole in favor?
Thank you for that. And that carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Chief Glavin gave us a report, and in this report, he stated the event that was held at Montrose Cultural Center for Earth Day, well with over 600 participants, and someone winning an e-bike. So all in all, a good day. There will be sessions held virtually and in person regarding the Clean Energy Improvement Program, which opens May 9. And I did hear some radio advertising on that today. So good to hear. In transportation, Arterio Boulevard sweeping is underway. We can all see that. And so far this spring, which is interesting, crews have removed 1.4 million pounds of debris from roads. So significant amount of debris out there. No wonder bikes have a hard time. Bicycle etiquette signs have been installed in 37 locations throughout Muscat CP Park and 12 locations through Crystal Lake. So this is impressive. We need to have that. People are feeling a little insecure out there with those bikes ripping by. And so we'll just get the walkers and the bikers and the, I don't even know those one-wheel things, what they're called, all that stuff, all working together. And then the Urban Forest Strategy RFP has been posted, and we have new park staff starting today. So I haven't seen them just yet, but we'll see them out and about after their, their bit of training. So that's all for my report.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bosch. Moving on to correspondence, there's nothing in your agenda. However, I did want to highlight a piece of correspondence I received from the AMA Patrol, Safety Patrol Organization, a certificate of appreciation presented to the city of Grand Prairie in recognition of time and support given to the AMA School Safety Patrol Program. So for those of you who aren't aware, this is an ongoing program where students go out, they learn how to patrol intersections, they keep other students safe, and it's an ongoing initiative in our community. And so I wanted to thank all the patrolers who take the time to do this. I know one of my sons was a patroler when he was young, and they really take great pride in this. And it's really a great initiative for them to help keep their friends safe at school crossings. So thank you to the AMA for that letter and for that certificate. Moving on to delegation business, we had three groups of delegations today. First on the agenda was the Grand Prairie Pirates Fastball Club, and I will open that up for discussion or debate. Recognizing Counselor Thiessen.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, no, obviously, we had three asks today at our delegation tables. A bit, a bit different for us to have that. But I'm going to make the first motion. I'll look to my council to make any subsequent motions further on and for discussion debate, obviously, on this. I heard that there was a, there was a need for potentially a gift and kind could come in handy, as well as perhaps a cash grant. I had already written it up here, and Counselor Blackmore asked it. So I'd move that city of Grand Prairie provide gift and kind of the facilities of South Bear Creek for the Grand Prairie Fastball Championship, as well as $5,000 sponsorship. And I'm open for discussion and debate. Thank you.
Counselor Plot, sorry, I apologize. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Counselor Thiessen, that was exactly what I would have said, too. And this, for me, leaves open the 5,000 for the city hosting grant to hopefully go to the men's ball tournament. So this gives everybody a little bit of something. So I will be supporting this.
Counselor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. And in support of it, I'm just curious, funding sources, do we need to identify something, or will administration just?
So I'll ask our CFO if, without an identified funding source, where can we expect this will come from? Or do you have a suggestion?
I would recommend, Mayor Clayton, that it be funded through Council Strategic Initiatives Fund.
No, I'm totally in support of that. Just wanted to know where the funding was coming from.
Counselor Bressi?
I'm honestly struggling with all the requests, with all the requests, because I love what these groups are doing. And I really do think these groups are worthy of city funding. At the same time, I think we set up a budget, we set up processes to fund events. And I'm really uncomfortable with us stepping outside of those, stepping outside of those processes. So it, it pains me, but I think I'm a no to giving money today. It's something that I'm, if we wanted to refer this to committee or give more time to do, to let some of the grant processes work out and then come back for decision, I'm okay. But I'm really uncomfortable with council getting to a point where we step out of our funding decisions and we grant funds a couple hours after a request is made. Just it's not a, as much as I like each of these one-off events, it's, I'm uncomfortable with us not just fixing processes if our processes are, processes are hurting. So I think I'm a no, and it hurts me to be a no, because I do love the event and I do want it to get money, just not in this way.
Thanks for your comments. I had a question for administration. Ms. Casualy, can you tell me, remind me when the sport hosting grant deadline is and when the applicants may hear if they were successful proponents or not?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So there are two intakes for the sport hosting grant per year. The next, second one of the year is July 1. So we have received a couple of applications prior to that deadline. So the intent would certainly be to review any current requests that we have at the next Community Advisory Committee meeting.
And remind me how much money is left in that funding stream?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that for you. I know that the maximum grant amount for this particular stream for large-scale events would be $5,000.
All right. Thank you for that. Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Again, I do want and I do plan on supporting all of these, but I, like Counselor Bressi, would just like to see this go to committee where we've actually put some thought into where we're going to draw the money from as opposed to on the spot. Again, I, I fully expect that I will support all three of these in the various ways. But again, I just think it's responsible of, of council and myself that we, we find responsible ways and sources for, for all of these.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could delay this for another week or so. The decision to fund.
Yeah, so I think that that's possible. I also think that if council wanted to, if Counselor Thiessen wanted to amend his motion where it included gift and kind, that discussion could be here, you, or, pardon me?
It is in there.
You could take part of it out, is what I'm saying. However, or it could be defeated to, to bring back an, a report to the appropriate standing committee. I will recognize Ms. Casualy, and then I'll go to Counselor Bosch.
Thank you through the mayor. With the, after the first intake of applications for the sport hosting grant, there is approximately $30,000 remaining in that fund.
Okay, perfect. So I will, I will ask Counselor Thiessen if he's comfortable striking the $5,000 from Council Strategic Initiatives Fund to leave just the $5,000 funding gift and kind today. Then at that point, knowing the information that there's more than likely a chance they're going to get funded from the sport hosting grant, the organization can come back if they aren't a successful proponent and ask council for funding then. But yeah.
I'd like to make a comment before he makes that decision, based on them together?
Okay, but I need to know if he's amending his motion first.
Just a question to administration, if I may. If, if we were to send the money back and the application would go in against the men's fastball, would that disqualify one or the other from receiving funding?
Ms. Casualy?
Thank you through the chair. The way the sport hosting grant is currently established is that there is a maximum capacity or a maximum grant allowable per, per organization, like per sport, so that not all of the funding is allocated to one particular sport in the first intake of the year. So certainly, that would be a council decision to approve funding allocations that were different than the designated criteria that are established.
Okay, so with that, with that knowledge in hand, I will not withdraw my motion. And the reason being is this is 5,000 for kids or 5,000 for adults. And I think with the funding source that's been picked out by our CFO, Council Strategic Initiatives Fund, we know we have a great sport of ballplayers here in softball and fast pitch. I want to grow that game, and I want to do something special for the kids. I know how much it means to them. So I want to ensure that they have that money here tonight. And so on that one, I will not, will not drop my, my motion for this one here. But I look to council making other motions on the other two. Thank you.
Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was hoping you wouldn't actually change it, because that is the point. The men's run a risk of not getting their funding because they put it in at, as the same organization. So for $5,000, and you're bringing 24 teams of kids here and their families and their, you know, friends, $5,000 outweighs, does not outweigh the amount of people coming to our city and the quality of life feature that this weekend will host. So I'm happy to hear you didn't change it.
Counselor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will also support this motion. Do not want to see the men's fastball being affected in any way. And I think having it approved now is what we're looking at for quality of life. And this is one of those attraction items that bring people here and shows off our great city. So I would encourage everyone to support this motion as it is.
Counselor Bressi?
Again, love the event, think it should get money, but I just don't think that, I think that this isn't a process that we should be, that we should be supporting. It's, we have dozens upon dozens upon dozens of events that the city supports every year. I don't think this is an efficient way to deal with that. I also think it's very disrespectful to our Community Advisory Committee, which is residents that we've appointed to make decisions like, to make decisions like this. So I think if, let this go through the grant process first, let this go through the, through the advisory committee first. And if it comes back to us and funding was insufficient, then we can maybe look at making a one-time exception for that. And if we think there's deficits in our process of how we should do funding, by all means, let's fix that. But just very uncomfortable with requests coming in and council making a decision a couple hours later when it's not an emergent situation.
That should have been your close, but I wanted to get in the queue, so I'm going to. Oh, perfect. It's your motion. There we go. Even better. So yeah, I echo Counselor Bressi's thoughts. I am a huge sport tourism advocate. I completely agree that this is a great opportunity for our community. But we already had three delegations tonight coming for money out of process. We have substantial money that we funded into various processes. And you want, now we're going to go to the next two, and you're going to continually fund initiatives that aren't in the proper process. We're just going to constantly, every delegation is going to be at every council meeting asking for money week after week after week. So I think that there is an opportunity. I absolutely support funding the field space gift and kind. I do support funding the initiative through $5,000 in cash. However, I think there's a process in that there is an opportunity to, to fund this event if they don't qualify for sport hosting. So I won't support your motion tonight. Thanks. And Counselor Thiessen to close?
Awesome. Thank you very much. Well, looks like I can add it up. It seems pretty sawed off right now.
You have a close?
I do, I do. You know, when we're, when we're talking about this ask, typically in the past, we have a sponsorship request form that would go out to your typical organization. It's hit off at a max. And if you want anything above that max, you would come to council exactly as our delegations have done, done today. So that, that is the process. That is not outside of the process, as we've already established it, as we've done for at least my term on council over a decade. This is a small ask. It's so small. It's a $5,000 and a $5,000 gift and kind. Not only does it like enable this group to create something very, very special for kids around the province and BC and the Northwest Territories and right here in Grand Prairie, but it also enables another organization within the same sports to host their own events later on. If anything, this is the definition of a strategic initiative and what our Strategic Initiatives Fund is designed for. It's also the process of which our sponsorships are designed for, if you want even just a little more than the maximum that we give out to people. I'm looking at this, at this delegation is very different than the other two delegations, because the other two delegations have significant asks and gift and kind as well. This is a small portion of it that I think we can do a lot more good in a lot greater time by not putting it through the typical processes, because in my opinion, this type of small one-off is a, is a, is a part of our process as it is. The other two, I have no concerns with going back to a committee and having discussion, because obviously, there's a larger discussion to their asks that are involved with this. This is a small thing, and it benefits many ages and especially our kids, which we are so proud of here in this community. Let's bring them to South Bear Creek. Let's show them our bike skills park. Let's show them our RV park. Let's show them our pitch and putt. Let's show them the other ball diamonds. Let's show them our trails. Let's show them what Grand Prairie has to offer Western Canada. For $5,000, that's a heck of a deal. Thank you.
Call the question.
Counselor O'Toole not in favor?
That carries five to four. Next delegation, Ms. Charbonneau. I'm looking to see if there's any business arising. Counselor Blackmore?
I have a question for administration, or anyone in the room who can answer the question, actually. If, if council were to give a gift and kind for the Bose Center, would the, would the delegation also be able to apply for the $14,000 grant? And would those two numbers together get closer to where we need to be for that?
Ms. Casualy?
Thank you through the mayor. Yes, there would be an opportunity for the delegation to apply for festival funding, even if they did receive gift and kind support.
That was my only question. I, I think that if this goes to committee, that's something to consider at that point in time. And I feel that this should be referred to committee.
So is that your motion?
Apparently, yes. I, I move that, I move that we refer Ms. Charbonneau's ask and the ask of the, of Daniel Becker to go to administration.
Bring both items back to the appropriate standing committee?
Thank you. Yes, those words.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that motion, which is to bring both these items back to the appropriate standing committee with information for funding sources? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It doesn't say in this motion. Oh, delegation's just changed. Okay.
Happens on the fly.
Happens on the fly.
All right. Seeing no one else, I'll call the question.
Counselor O'Toole in favor?
Thank you for that. And that carries unanimously. There are no notices of motions? Sorry, Counselor Bressi?
I'd like to, I'd like to move that council direct administration to bring back to the appropriate standing committee a report outlining the existing corporate sponsorship process and potential amendments to sponsorship policies. And just to speak this, I think Counselor Thiessen was very accurate. Right now, our policy, at least the one I can find on the city website, if it's the only one governing us, is he comes to council with any ask over $2,000, and council makes a decision. And there's debates, should council make a decision in the same meeting? And obviously, that's where council went, which I, which I respect, but I don't know if that should be the process that it makes in the same meeting. And I also, when I look at that policy, the one I found on the city website, it's about 20 years old, and $2,000 is probably not an appropriate limit anymore. And so for me, I think there should be a process, whether it's, in my mind, there probably should be a sponsorship budget and a process where something higher than 2,000, whether it's administration or whether it's administration in conjunction with the mayor, they're making that decision instead of it having to be this dog and pony show of come to council meeting and introduce all the inefficiencies and all of that. And, or maybe there's other processes there. But clearly, for me, we're seeing more and more groups come to councils direct with direct cast sponsorship. I don't think it's a fair or efficient process. I think it's something that we should look at. And I shared some ideas of how it could be fixed, but really, the intent of this motion is for administration to bring forward its advice of how it thinks it should be. And if those ideas weren't the ones administration brings forward, completely. it should be. And if those ideas weren't the ones administration brings forward, completely fine with me, but we should give more attention to this process.
Thanks for that motion. I do support that. I think that tonight's discussion was not about our intent to support fastball or not. I think that everybody said that they think that this is a valuable addition to our community. However, to be debating spending $5,000 out of significant initiatives, priorities, fund seems inappropriate. That fund was established to do significant things in our community and we're going to 5,000 it to death. So anyways, I think that there's a proper, proper policy that needs to be updated. And you're right, $2,000 is not really relevant these days. So I recognize Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I guess I'm just going to make the comment. To me, it is significant what, what this ask was for small dollars coming out of it. But remember that just recently, we on the fly gave $10,000 to the Rotary Club for English lessons. And when the Salvation Army came back, you know, we have done this before. So I, I will vote in favor of this because if there needs to be a, a process in the future, that's okay. I'm okay with that. But we need to make sure that it feels like we're punishing someone today if we didn't do this, in my opinion. And just because of our behaviors in the, in the recent past. So if we welcome this, this process or deep dive into it, then, you know, we can, we can have our, you know, dollars leaving here on, on matters that are appropriate with the council.
Counselor Bressi, would you like to close?
Sure. I guess just my previous experience, my first interaction with municipal government was coming and asking for money for a disc golf course. I went direct to council and much to my surprise, I got a, a big amount of money and a bunch of other support, well, a big amount of money for me, not for the city, but for my group it was. And a bunch of sport groups started asking, well, how the heck did he do that? And I just happened to be the one that was bold enough to come straight to council and was, and was able to be well spoken. I don't know if, as much as I appreciate the money, I don't know if I was the one group that should have, should have got that money. And so even from personal experience, it's these one-offs. I don't know if they're the most fair way to do things. I don't know if they're the most efficient way to do things. And the issue is when it was one-offs, that's fine, but it's just becoming more and more frequent at these meetings. And it's that creep that's worrying me. So again, really want to support these groups. And this isn't meant to make it harder for them to get money. In fact, quite the opposite, quite the opposite. But to make sure we've got a good process for how we're doing this so it's fair to all and so we're being strategic in our investments.
All right. So that's Counselor Bressi's close. Call the question?
Counselor O'Toole in favor?
That carries unanimously. So there are no notices of motions, no unfinished business, no public hearings since we're not having an evening session. And I'm going to now go to council member reports. Start with Counselor Teason.
Hey, let's get it going. All right. Had a pretty busy couple of weeks here. Started off shortly after the last council meeting where with Grand Spirit Foundation, I had the opportunity to go and drive with Steve Madden and Tom Burton to the Victor Lake sod turning of the new elder shelter that's going to provide 12 residents to, to elders within the area of Victor Lake, which is good. This, the groundbreaking event, I had about 80 people that showed up from it from municipalities and regions outside of our own as well. So really happy for the Evergreens Foundation for the building of this, another housing management body that we all serve under, under the Greater Alberta Seniors and Community Housing Body. On April 21st, I was off to Edmonton for the inner city forum on social policy. It's a bit of a different take on the day. Normally, we talk about what each municipality is doing when it comes to transit, daycare, all that. This is more of a focused meeting where we had about 40 administration and council combined from around the province, talking about housing and homelessness and having a workshop on that and really pounding the drum on, on the human right that having appropriate housing is for every individual in this community. So we prepped some questions for the upcoming provincial election as well as started a strategic plan that we're going to work together on how we're going to continue to get this message out to people and see the state of housing change throughout the province. On April 22nd, I took part in Earth Day Events, which is very well attended at the Teresa Sargent Hall, as well as the library, or sorry, the Prairie Art Gallery Art Annual Art Auction, which was, was fairly well attended as well. I got to see our own counsel Grant Berg's piece that he submitted for that was one of the second, I think it was the second highest that went for sales for contributions to it. And I'm sure he'd love to talk to you about it with the type of stone that he did. He gave a great description up on stage. Also took part in the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Strategic Plan unveiling, as well on the same day on April 27th, went to the Mending Mental Health Matters at Mad Hatters for the United Way with several members of council, almost all members of council at both events that day. So it was really good. I'm not going to point anybody out because I might omit one or two. And finally, we had our Grand Spirit Foundation meeting this past Friday, April 28th, out in Lakeview. It was a great meeting, just taking care of business, making sure that the Spirit River Belt goes a long ways and gets to its completion date that we're hoping for. Made some funding decisions on the track, as well as went over a 360 review thoroughly with our executive director, Steve Madden. And there was a lot of good conversation generated that largely around how we all can benefit the organization by improving our communication skills. So not just, not just our ED, but also our managers, as well as our board and how we communicate what Grand Spirit is up to, not just inside the lodges, but outside in the greater community as well. So it was a very thorough process, sometimes hard process, but at the end of the day, we all left, you know, happier and I think more fulfilled from it because we're seeing the processes change and we're, we're hearing it from the seniors that things are, things are getting better and they feel a part of their lodge even more so now. So hopefully we keep trending up in that direction and we don't have need for another 360 in the future. But this is an example of how a 360 can really go the right way for an organization. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that, Counselor Teason. Counselor Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My report will be significantly shorter. I attended an airport commission meeting on April 19th. I also went to the art auction on the 22nd and to the International Earth Day at the Montreux Centre. And I was one of a very small handful of adults who colored cookies along with a large group of children. They're, they're fun. I really enjoyed that. I was really impressed, especially with the bee people who took the whole, I think, I don't know, it used to be called the Rotary Room. I don't know if it's still called the Rotary Room, is it? Filled the whole room with information on bees and how to keep bees and the benefit of bees. And so I really appreciated that. I also spent a day in meetings as we move forward with some CAO recruitment. I attended a downtown association meeting. And last Thursday and Friday, I was in Edmonton for a symposium on communications and it was called bucking the trends of communication on the increasing likelihood that people who are in elected office will experience verbal and physical abuse while on the job and how to manage that. There was no clear answer other than there's not really much legal action that can be taken unless of course the abuse is physical. And, but it is an issue that is on the radar and people are starting to talk about this. So I know that in the future, there will be more support for people who have experienced unkind abuse while serving a public office. And I look forward to that. I'm not one of the people who can say that I've been abused verbally or physically or mentally, but I do know that not everyone has a stick of skin as I do. That is all I have.
Thanks for that, Counselor Blackmore. Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended a number of meetings. I'm just going to focus on, on one in particular. It seems like I took five pages of notes. I'm not going to read all five pages, but that was the tourism presentation with the Legacy Group that came in. And so there's two different areas that, of tourism that are being focused on right now. One is the Northern Rockies Tourism Zone. And then the other one is just right here with the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association, although they're managing the Northern Rockies Tourism Zone out of here, here in Grand Prairie, with a goal of doubling tourism revenue by 2035 and with the national parks pretty much already capacity. They're looking at developing new tourism opportunities. And we here in the Peace Country sit on, on some gold. If you go down to Grand Cash, we've got mountains, we've got prairies, be it the Sexsmith Wembley area. We've got sport tourism right here in Grand Prairie. And apparently there was an inventory done of comparing us to other places across the province in Western Canada. And they said, sport tourism, we have the venues, the quality and the quantity. It sets us apart as we do bid on these special events, be it regional, provincial or national. There's plenty of opportunities for us as well. One of them is Crown Land. We have Crown Land all around us, 80% of it. So for a number of outdoor adventurers, there's opportunity there with working with the province and opening up some of that for our own recreation. Grand Cash again has some great opportunities that be it Jasper Bev currently have, but are not, not taken advantage of. We do need more data and we do need more amenities. But it also, and this goes back to a, a comment earlier from Chief Harrop, it may be too big of a bite for Grand Prairie Regional Tourism. They need help from partners, be it business, be it governments on a local level, and we need to harness some local expertise. But overall, there's plenty of opportunity that we're already taking advantage of. How do we amplify it? But also, how do we develop new tourist opportunities to attract more people to the region? Sport tourism was a common one. And I know that's something that Mayor Clayton has focused on and we as a council have as well. And even today, we'd seen some of that too. The Powwow, another great regional tourism event. So it's just how do we build on some of these and how do we develop more? So it was great. I really look forward to seeing the final report and having that report in my hand, just to find out who we can work with to help develop these because we do have the local expertise. But sometimes we've got our head down and not looking up because we are working hard. But there is lots of opportunity for tourism in the region.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg. Counselor O'Toole?
All right. I had a busy month here, six weeks, whatever that happened to turn out as deputy mayor. I attended the-
It's been two weeks since your last council meeting?
Yeah. So I'll just go back to the last two weeks.
That'd be great.
National Volunteer Week was the funder's lunch at the new location of the volunteer services. Was a site visit. It was great to see the renovations that they had completed. And the next, later that day, I attended the accessibility legislation presentation. And just so you all know, remember back last fall, I was on a board that answered a lot of questions, put in some input. And this is a reality for people with disabilities in Alberta. One of the last Canadian provinces with no comprehensive accessibility legislation is Alberta. And there are thousands of people on ACE disability benefits who, if given the opportunity, would get off ACE, get a job and start paying taxes. And I can give you more information at another time when we're not, haven't sat through six hours of meetings already. Community Futures Board meeting I attended, I went to the Northeast Bracket Racing Association Car Show and Celebrity. There was some TV stars, I guess, that were there. And, and it was a good event. It's the biggest fundraiser that the Northeast Bracket Racing Association puts on this year. I was also at another onboarding of a new employee program. There was a number of new employees starting here. And one of the most exciting ones, I guess, is the patroller of the month pizza party. And I was a patroller back in the day when I was 12 years old. And St. Clement School, right off 108th Avenue. And I remember reporting a bad person that didn't stop for us. And I just remembered to my partner, because we had both sides of the street broke, blocked off, I get the first numbers. So I left off the first letters of the license plate. And the lady, or the girl beside me on the other side, she left the last ones. We wrote down it in our little notebooks that we kept. We reported it to the principal and within an hour, they caught the guy and he was charged. And it was a pretty good penalty for not stopping for a patroller. And I guess that still goes on in the community. I also attended the Mending Mental Health at Mad Hatters. Great food, great people there and a lot of fundraising going on. And I was also at the National Day of Mourning Ceremony and, and Presentation at Safety City. And I'd like to thank our counsel, Michael Connor, for doing a great job representing the city there. And with that, I got a lot more there, but that's a short, sweet.
Thanks for that, Counselor-
Shorter than it gets.
Oh, sorry. Counselor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was also a patroller when I grew up in school. So anyway, speaking of schools, great segue. And I did mock councils with some St. Catherine's students, two different groups, with Counselor Bressi and Counselor Palat. Did, went to the National Volunteer Services Volunteer Bureau with Counselor Bressi O'Toole and Mayor Clayton. Did an asset management elected officials, which I had to leave early for because the police commission panel was on. So we had three of those meetings and 72 resumes to go through. So I did a lot of reading and took a pavement structure workshop and went to the GPRT Street Strat Plan. Can't wait for the report. Went to the United Way at Mad Hatters. And I delivered as deputy mayor, National Day of Mourning. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Connor. Counselor Berg? Sorry, Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll just add to Counselor Berg's comments about the GPRTA preliminary strategic management plan. In fact, that they, Alberta Tourism or Tourism Alberto wants to double the tourism sector from $10 to $20 billion by 2020, or 2035. So just putting, adding a number to, to all his comments, which is not a small task. Art Auction 42 was great. I'm fortunate enough to sit on that board and help out with that, that committee and set that up. I also attended that day, the Storm Strategy Session, the Storm Hockey Team and, you know, building a future for our, our great hockey team here. Next, the, we went to, we often have meetings with stakeholders in our community. And the last recent one we went to was the Construction Association meeting. So it was good to, to meet some of, some of those people. And then last, I think it was Thursday, Friday, I'm not sure, Thursday, Chamber of Commerce Not-for-Profit Mixer held up the jackpot. That's the second year this has gone on with all the not-for-profits joining in. And it's a very, very large mixer versus, you know, the one, the one businesses or the one organizations that they generally go to. They had music, like a singer and of course, drinks and food and prizes. So that was great. And then of course, attended the mental health, mental, mending mental health. We need mending verbal health here too. But in any case, it was busy two weeks. Thanks.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bosch. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was at a lot of these things that have been mentioned. Two particular highlights for me was the Grade Six classes. Those are always fun. And as a United Way board member, I want to thank the counselors who attended the many mental health. It was great to see the community filling that room. So thank you for those of you that came, came to support. I'll spend a lot of my time, oh, and also many mental health, I won a suit. So I'm going to be looking sharp for a future council meeting. I'm excited for that. But I'll spend a lot of time away last week for Alberta municipalities. I had an audit finance committee day where we accepted all the financial statements for the various corporate entities, had a Munich's AGM. While I was in Edmonton, I got to do a visit to the Le Duke City Council, got to hear some of their, some of their thoughts, see their city hall for the first time, which has an indoor garden that residents can come enjoy, which is something I'd love to see in Grand Prairie someday. So it was good to see that. And also had an Alberta Municipalities Board of Directors meeting. And also had an Alberta municipalities Board of Directors meeting. So that was busy. The special show that I want to give to staff, though, is Earth Day. It was great seeing Montrose Cultural Centre fuller than I remembered in previous Earth Days. And seeing residents go there, not just having a good event, but getting some really practical stuff. I know personally, I got lots of seeds that are planted and hopefully growing right now. I've, I've also had two different residents tell me that they learnt about the Clean Energy Improvement Program at Earth Day, and they plan to come to the open house happening in the next week or so to learn more about it. So, or Thursday, yeah. Thursday in person at the library in the evening, and in the afternoon virtually, if people want to learn how to get funding to do clean energy improvements on their home and get a low-interest loan that's attached to their property, not them. That's a great opportunity. And so it was great that Earth Day wasn't just a fun, feel-good event, but really residents took really practical steps out of it to improve their homes, improve their lives, and care for our environment. So a big thank you to our city staff who made that day possible.
Great. Thanks for that councillor Bressy. Councillor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Many of the highlights of other council members have already mentioned, so I won't go through those. But I do want to just mention the school. I did, for the first time ever, I got to come, and for me anyways, I got to come do two grade six classes. And it was, it's a lot of fun just seeing their engagement. And you wonder, the conversations going at home, because some kids got some pretty, pretty great questions. Although it was mentioned, I just, because I was deputy deputy mayor at the time, I guess, filling in for councillor O'Toole, the Construction Association meeting, I think, went over really well. And I want to thank our staff that was in the room. I think having administration in the room at that point actually gave a lot of answers directly to some questions that some of the members did have. We talked about everything from procurement to policing, to how they could better get involved with our community around potentially getting involved with our incentive programs. So I think it was a great conversation. The other one that I had an opportunity to be kind of deputy deputy as well was our AquaTerra shareholder update. And I guess out of that one, a couple of things that hit me was inflation has happened to everybody, and it's happened to AquaTerra as well. So they had, did a little bit of discussion on some of the pressures they're seeing on some of their financings as well, with our economy being slower locally than Grand Prairie for the last few years, with what that's done to levies for them to do infrastructure projects in the future. And so, didn't say specifically, but I would be surprised if we don't have to look at increasing water rates at some point, because it just seems inevitable with inflation as well. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks for that councillor Palat. And yeah, thank you to the work that deputies and other council members do to support the significant demands that are put on myself and our council for representing and showing up to different events and committees across our community and across the region. My last few weeks have been filled with a lot of time on the Police Commission Selection Committee, as well as the Chief Administrative Officer Search. So thank you to administration and the people that supported me in those significant tasks. I also had the pleasure of having lunch with two potential new general practitioner doctors that are looking to move, looking to take patients in Grand Prairie. So fingers crossed that comes to fruition. Also attended the South Peace Physicians Attraction and Retention Committee out in Sexsmith. So it was a good conversation about rural needs and rural doctors and, and what the rural municipalities and our partners are doing to attract and retain them. As mentioned, attended the Volunteer Services Bureau tour of their new facility. A great new initiative there that they're working on. So congratulations to them. Had the pleasure of touring the Red Deer Recovery Center. And for those who aren't aware, it's a 75-bed facility that will open in, in mid-May, and accommodating 75 individuals for treatment of, with mental health and addiction needs. As noted, it was announced in the last provincial budget, Grand Prairie has been awarded a 75-bed treatment facility as well. So being able to see that facility in person, I was sponsored, supported by Chief McEckern, as well as our interim Director of Housing, Wendy Hughes, as well as a administrative colleague from the county of Grand Prairie. It was great to be able to tour that facility and see not only what a great opportunity for treatment this will be, but what an overall healing initiative that this will be for people who are struggling with mental health and addiction. So I look forward as Grand Prairie and this region continue down the path to finding solutions for those that need support. I was with councillor O'Toole, attended Vesake. I had the opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of council. And that was a double-headed, double-ender night, as I also attended the art gallery auction in the same evening. So I caught the tail end of the art gallery auction. And thank you to councillor Teason and councillor Berg for supporting that through their own initiatives. And it's great to see that it's a 42nd annual initiative. So great event. I think they did very well in their financial. Sorry, what, sorry, what's your interruption about?
I'm the one who spent the money.
Okay. Thanks, thanks to councillor Bosch for spending her money. Anyways, I attended the Canadian Hydrogen Convention with Chief Investment Officer Jeff Harrop, as well as a representative from InvestGP, Chad Sheldon. It was a great conference to talk about the future of hydrogen and, and the needs for renewables. This conversation on hydrogen, making hydrogen from natural gas is a prime conversation for our region. I look forward to future discussions on that. Also attended with Chief McEckern and councillor Blackmore, the bucking the trend to talk about abuse to administrative individuals, as well as elected officials. It was a good conversation about having fair conversations, but not being abusive in the meantime. Also had a meeting last week to address and, and hopefully come to soon, future conversations on the childcare crisis in our community. It is significant. The needs are significant. There are 400 people on waiting lists right now. This impacts every industry in our community, from healthcare to administrative services to retail and hospitality. There is a significant childcare crisis in our community. And albeit that the province has implemented programs to support childcare needs, there is still work to be done. So I look forward to future conversations. And then last but not least, I had the pleasure of tending with councillor Bressy and councillor Blackmore and councillor Teason, the O'Brien Lake Orchard Grand Opening. Thank you to councillor Teason for bringing greetings on my behalf, because I was a little under the weather. But it was a great community event. Really enjoyed seeing the work. And they will, they will definitely reap the fruits of their labor in future years. But it was, it's a great little orchard that they've built. So congratulations to that community group and the hard work that they did to bring that to fruition. Anyways, I know. All right. With that, I'm going to call the meeting adjourned, and I wish you all a good evening.